Good evening.
Good evening, how are you doing?
Doing alright. On that one. Alright, number six. This is where we added your language. So do I have a motion to change six to read no person shall operate park or trailer in ATV, UTV, and any village park conservancy?
Shouldn't say or instead of an.
Okay, very good. So, oh, you made a motion, do I have a second? One second. Second, I have a motion and a second. To change number six to no person shall operate park or trailer in ATV, UTV.
In.
Yeah, in any village park conservancy or school property. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Okay. Number seven.
I motion and a second.
Second. So, number seven, we're going to leave and check on that to see if we can do that. Number eight. We're going to add liability insurance and again, check on that. So, do I have a motion for number eight to add the word liability insurance?
I motioned to add the word liability insurance to number eight.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay.
Can I ask a question with that?
Yeah, we're in discussion, so go ahead.
It's an operator, so does it, let's say, say my friend has an ATV and I'm driving it. Is that something that would be under my auto insurance that I also have myself as an operator insured for liability with the use of an ATV?
No, you would get a separate insurance on the ATV, just like your. Well, hang on, the owner has to have it, it's just like your car, it's not the driver that needs insurance, it's the vehicle that needs insurance. So you have to insure your vehicle and then it doesn't matter who's driving, the insurance is tied to the vehicle, not the individual. Just like if you let someone drive your car and they crashed it.
So does it matter that it says operator instead of owner?
Yeah, no, that's a good catch, I think it should be the owner.
Sixteen-year-old operator.
Yeah.
It's not the owner.
It's the owner, it should be, Laurie?
But would the operator have to be aware what the owner has for insurance?
Well, it's just like with insurance, with a car, yeah.
I mean, like if you're renting a car, you make sure that.
You're insured.
Right, so I think it's kind of both.
I think whoever's driving it better have proof on your hands, so even though it's mine, but you're driving it, you better have my proof of insurance.
Right.
Right, it's no different than a car. If you let me drive your car and I get stopped, I have to show that the car is insured. Yeah, but we. So, we can put, that should probably say owner must possess proof of current liability insurance.
I get, I get, I just didn't know if people operating them had to have specific right around their insurance, but it's not like, that was the clarification I was seeking.
The issue with that, and maybe Paul can answer this, so I'm looking at it as a citation point of view, so, so who do you, so we're issuing a citation to the owner because an operator drove it? Yeah, wouldn't you do that with a car? I guess it's been a long time since I wrote a ticket for failure to have insurance. He would issue the person driving the car.
Right.
For failure to have insurance. Okay, I mean, you could issue, there is a statute that does apply to owners, but technically you issue the operator, it's no different than a, you know, who's has a seatbelt in the car, you still issue the operator for the seatbelts. So they're responsible for what they're doing.
Does operator have to have insurance coverage as specified?
Well, what you need to do as an operator, you gotta ask your person who owns it, is this insured? I honestly, I think you should just leave it. And they're responsible for it, and if they didn't, then they can share the ticket with the owner. Alright. Alright, so we have the motion and a second to leave it as operator must possess proof of current liability insurance on the ATV, UTV. Alright, any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same. Alright. Okay, now we're gonna go down to number seventeen, and this is, if the, allowed on the public streets for the whole calendar year, and that's what I think it should say, then it covers leap year, or from a time period of what has been proposed, May first to September 30th.
So I'll make a motion that ATV, UTV be allowed on public streets with the exception of 52.06(c)(2) from May 1st, beginning May 1st, ending on September 30th.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Alright, discussion. I think it just confuses people and I just don't get the logic of the difference between driving an ATV on September 30th versus October 1st. I just don't see the difference.
Yeah, well, we already have, so, I think what makes it more confusing is we have here that you can operate in 52.06(c)(2), you can operate during the period beginning October 1st, ending April 30th, on the chair of the purpose of snow, so. So, do we just take that out completely of that part of the ordinance? Because now you're talking two different time periods, two different.
No, but you're talking about two different activities. And here's the thing, the thing that you gotta be worried about because there's a big push for a sunset clause, you don't wanna eliminate that with the sunset. The sunset is tied to everything in C, right? It should be, and that's what we'll clarify on there. But if you change that, then it's gonna be changed forever. I think it's very clear, when you wanna plow and you have that on there, this is the time period, it's during the winter. Now people can drive a calendar year on that. That's just my feeling on it. I don't think there's any confusion at all on that. And if we want it, when this becomes permitted, if we wanna modify that, I'd be more than happy to do that, because you're right, it becomes almost moot point.
Taylor? Yes. I'll just clarify something you said, the sunset has nothing to do with B and the plowing part. Either way, either, probably either way.
Right, no, no, disagree with you, because if we change it, now if we change C. Oh, yeah, C I don't mind, but he was talking about changing the plowing dates.
Well, we.
He wanted to take care of that, that's what I'm, what I oppose to.
Because if you take out the plowing dates, they could drive year-round with a plow on the front of their ATV, even if C sunsets.
I don't wanna, I don't wanna touch B. I don't wanna touch.
Yeah, well, then I'm missing it, so what are you, I thought you brought that out.
I brought that up because it's.
You said we have a charge in.
I'm not saying, I'm not asking you to change that, because that, that is.
Now, I misunderstood, I thought you said we need to change this then.
No, 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 I, reason I'm putting in May 1st to September 30th is because we already have the rest of the year, October 1st, April 30th, in the previous section of that ordinance. That's why.
Okay, Michael?
Well, I wanna address that, but those dates are only if you're driving with a snow removal attachment on, is why those are valid.
Correct.
Which, if it's not gonna snow till December, I'm not gonna make somebody drive around with a snowplow on the front of their ATV from October and November, that doesn't make any sense to me.
Okay, any other discussion? We're gonna take, I think this one will take a roll call vote. So the motion is to put, to change seventeen to read ATV, UTVs will be allowed on public streets with the exception of 52.06(c)(2) from May 1st to September 30th.
Because then 52.06 kicks in?
No.
No, 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 that.
You can't.
That doesn't change at all.
No, no, that's, that has nothing to do with plowing.
Okay.
I just wanna clear, section B and section C have parts that don't mesh.
Right.
And so there is gonna be some confusion about use, in section B.
I'm gonna disagree with you, there are two different activities. One is an activity of plowing, it's very.
May I read part four of section B, Jay?
What's that?
May I read part two? Operation of an ATV on the roadway is authorized only on the extreme right side of the roadway, except a left turn, maybe any part of the roadway, where it is safe to do so given prevailing conditions. That's in B.
Yeah, I'm guessing, I don't have a problem with that because you have a huge blade on it now.
It doesn't say anything about a blade in for it.
Well, it's all tied to snow removal, isn't it?
Yeah, it is.
It is, it's all tied to snow removal.
I think there's, and parts there is another, I think that's one that could cause confusion in this couple.
Well, I guess, so, maybe Paul will recommend changes to that if that's the case. Could be, we can do that. Right now I have a motion and a second, any other discussion? So I'm gonna do a roll call.
Okay.
Let's do a roll call vote. Trustee Vander.
No.
Trustee Franswell?
Yes.
Trustee Pam Kowski?
No.
Trustee Lucius?
Yes.
Trustee Calmorder?
No.
Trustee Rosius?
Yes.
President Lang? No. Motion fails, so, we're back to what seventeen is currently saying, I will make a motion that we change seventeen to read ATVs, UTVs will be allowed on public streets with the exception of 52.06(c)(2) for the calendar year.
I'll second that.
Alright, discussion. We'll take a roll call vote.
You said for the calendar year?
For the calendar, so three hundred and sixty-five days calendar year. That covers leap year.
If you're going to say that, then you don't really need to say anything.
Yeah, that's kind of what I, that's true.
That's what I was thinking before. You're not, I said, we even need it, I mean, you're basically saying you can operate.
Alright, and we can vote this one down and make that as a. So, well, I already have, we don't have to do a roll call. That makes total sense. Alright, we've got the motion, a second, discussion. All in favor for that change, say aye. All opposed, same, aye. Motion fails. So. I will give this motion another try, I make a motion to remove number seventeen. Just, I make a motion to remove seventeen.
I second that. I second that.
Any discussion? Alright, roll call vote. Trustee Rosius?
No.
Trustee Calmorder?
Yes.
Trustee Lucius?
I'm staying.
Trustee Pam Kowski?
Yes.
Trustee Franswell?
No.
Trustee Vander?
Yes.
President Lang? Yes. Motion carries. Alright. Number eighteen. I got a lot of notes here, I'm not sure how we ended up, I think we removed B and put it in there that if it's a permanent closure, it must go to the board, is that how we finished?
Yeah.
Okay.
Language for two, I think, two of the ESD web recommendations.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Alright, I have a second, discussion. Alright. I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same. Carries. Okay, number nineteen. I guess someone can start it off, it's currently at two, I've heard six and I've heard a year.
I'd make the motion to, for this village ordinance, 52.06(c)(2) will sunset two years after the ordinance becomes into effect.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Alright, discussion.
So. I would be better with a year. I think you're right, six months is too short of time.
Okay, Gavin, what's your feeling?
Yeah, I'd be better with six months on this one, but certainly feel like two years is kicking it down, you know, down the road pretty far to, things will look a lot different, so, I feel like that's, I feel like it's circling a little bit of duty, but on the back end, I feel like it's circling too far, too far out in the future, so, I'd be better with one, of course, but I'd be best with six months.
Alright, Michael?
I definitely think six months is too short and one or two years is kind of a toss-up with me. I don't have a strong feeling either way, I'd be fine with two years.
Sarah?
I feel like in the interest of the people who have spoken, that we should give some consideration to the percentage of village residents that are not in favor of this at all, and consider six months.
Laurie?
Um, I would consider a year.
Okay, I think. I think to me, I certainly, I believe two years is a good one to get data and stuff on it, but I can certainly compromise with a year, I think six months by the time you get up and running, you're gonna have zero real data to do that, so.
I'm sorry.
Well, sure, can I finish first?
Well, just about the data, so there's been four police calls already and this hasn't even gone into effect.
Okay, I'm not sure what.
Four police calls of intimidation and illegal use of ATVs on roads in the last couple of months, and this hasn't even been, so I think there's no problem getting data.
In six months?
Right, we've got four police calls already in two months.
Okay. I can provide information about specific. Yeah, well, that's, we're moving a different, I.
Finish your part.
Yeah. So, I think for the interest of everybody, I certainly feel that maybe one year is probably a good one to do, as long as everybody understands we're gonna be bringing this back up and, potentially, but, I'm, I feel, let's go with the vote, but I, like I say, I can't support six months at all. A year would give us hopefully a fall and a summer and a fall and a spring, so.
It would.
Right, right, yeah, yeah, so. But let's just, we have a motion and a second for two years, let's do a roll call. Trustee Vander?
No.
Trustee Franswell?
No.
Trustee Pam Kowski?
Yes.
Trustee Lucius?
No.
Trustee Calmorder?
Yes.
Trustee Rosius?
No.
President Lang?
I will vote out.
Alright, so two years is not, do I have a motion? Well, I'll make the motion, and this, this village ordinance, 52.06(c)(2) will sunset one year after the ordinance becomes into effect.
I second that.
Alright, I have a motion and a second, discussion. Alright, let's do a roll call vote. Trustee Calmorder?
Yes.
Trustee Lucius?
Yes.
Trustee Pam Kowski?
Yes.
Trustee Franswell?
No.
Trustee Vander?
Yes.
Trustee Rosius?
Yes.
President Lang? Yes. Okay, so, it passes for a one-year sunset for the ordinance. The one thing we forgot, go back to sixteen, we were replacing the public access trailering with operator and passengers under the age of eighteen must wear protective headgear as defined in Wisconsin state statute.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I.
I don't know who went first, some roll.
I'll second.
Okay, Michael second. I have a motion and a second, amendment to replace number sixteen with operators and passengers under the age of eighteen must wear protective headgear as defined in state statute. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same.
Jay, before you go on, did you have to vote to remove sixteen or just replace?
I just, I put in the motion to replace.
Okay.
But we didn't have to. Alright, so. I believe we now have an ordinance, a draft or proposed ordinance. Now we will talk about the bigger issue, or issues that are out there, if this should be passed or not. So we had the original motion, all these amendments changed that, so now that motion includes all the amendments we just voted on. So, who would like to start, oh, can I just make a comment before you guys get to discussing? So, it was brought up about our complaints, we have received numerous complaints already, ATVs on the roadway at least a couple times, we've had, we actually caught somebody doing it, so we directed them. We've had a harassment complaint filed against somebody because of this whole contentious issue. So we've had a few things, and we've had a snowmobile incident that happened right away when I started here, causing about a thousand dollars to the boardwalk, which my understanding is that's been remedied, but the only thing my position from the police department stands for, point, is that, I mean, we are not supporting, I mean, that's not our job, right, so we're not in favor of what you're doing or not, I mean, we will support whatever this village board wants, but I do want it clear that I think that if we go through with this ordinance, this board, I would want support from them because of, my position would be no warnings, no nonsense. I think you need to do that. I would basically be taking away the discretion of the officers to give warnings, which is the norm on most things, say by, but because of this being so contentious, I think we need to take a strong look at it. And that's what other communities have done, it works to have no-nonsense policy. So it means if somebody is breaking the law, they get a citation, no warnings. The warnings will come before he, you know, in the paper and those kind of things, that people are forewarned. That's the only thing I would, I would really want your support, because we will get people complaining about being cited, and so they will be coming to you with complaints. That's my only position on it.
Okay. I got a question for Chief on that, so, there's times when, and I know, I'm assuming you can only answer for your force, so like, Bay County is patrolling and they, they have, they see a violator, they may not have the same.
I don't think they can enforce village ordinance anyway, so they, you know, they would forward it to us if they saw.
Okay, okay, yeah, I just didn't know how that was gonna go.
No, it, yeah, they would have no authority over our ordinances.
Okay.
So, and I have a question, what if there isn't a cross, and police have surrounded duty and someone calls in an ATV combined, the Bay County sheriff comes out?
That would, so, the way I've been handling those, if we have that, which we haven't had that since I've taken over, we've been covering twenty-four hours, because we've been maneuvering the schedule to cover it. But if that were to happen, which does happen, especially when I don't have officer cyber full-time because it's in the schools, then we would just follow up on that, like any other. If, I guess the stance would be, if we find out that. A lot of times if somebody calls, I've ever seen public complaints, or they. Tends to catch them, so I'd be encouraged to call. So I would be directing my staff as to. I just think that this being so contentious. Sarah?
If you have, if you have police every day of the year during these.
I gotta.
Excuse me?
We just lost microphone, so.
Yeah.
Let me try to see if I can get us back on, on board here with the microphone. I saw you flicking up like this, there's an easier way to get things. Okay, can you all hear us now?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, Chief, you got.
Yes.
You were key.
I asked.
Yeah, so to answer your question, I can't guarantee that, so there have been times where there haven't been an officer during a portion of that time. Since I've taken over since January, I've tried to cover twenty-four-seven, even if I have to change my own schedule, I work in weekends, overnight, I work some overnights, I mean, I try to do my best to cover twenty-four hours. That being said, it's not, I can't guarantee you that every eight to eight, there'll be someone on because if somebody pays vacation or whatever, so, so that could happen, but we will do our best with what the staff, with the staff that we have. But I think you need to understand, the county, when they're not working, the county will respond, take the report, and then what they do is forward the report and then they do the follow-up, so, it's not like no one will respond or do anything, they'll still stop the action, it's just that they're not able to do the enforcement. And something like this, if we, if this passes and everything goes through, I will have contact with the lieutenant on the west side and make sure any ATV snowmobile complaints come directly to me so I can assign them or handle them, so. We've also made a little change on the, on our recording software, which will go into effect tomorrow, to actually have a line item that says they can be using the complaints, snowmobile complaints, so that way it'll be easier for me to present to the board if there's questions of that nature. Okay. Okay, I'd like to, I would like us to focus on the ordinance then.
I was gonna ask one other, sorry.
All right, go ahead.
Uh, when you were talking about zero enforcement and giving our services the ability to issue warnings, that was, you were talking about total enforcement for this ordinance only, right? You're a little slow.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm just making sure because you said when the sun sets.
And warnings are a big part of that, no, I'm just specifically talking about this. So that way, since it's so contentious that we are taking a very strong approach and the board takes it seriously also. I mean, people are going to, there's going to be people that buy their law, but I think for the most part, they'll be self policing, I would hope. Okay, yeah, I just, I wanna kinda end this because that's obviously already putting cart ahead of the horse, we already it all may be viewed on on this, so that will be, we can have that discussion at another time if it passes or something, yeah, that discussion. All right, who would like to start this discussion? Come on?
Um, yeah, I think, I just, you know, I wanna say a few things that get get out where I've been in this, maybe others have been as well. Um, since this came up, you know, I've learned a lot about ATVs and UTVs. My family owns them, rides them quite a bit. Um, I'm not a big fan, I'll come out and tell you I'm not a big fan at all. But um, but I look beyond my own opinions and gather a lot of information from the people that live in this village. And uh, I've got friends on both sides, as many of you, I'm sure, have friends that you've been hearing it from both sides. And I think if we sort of, you know, dig through the mire and and some of the just file that has been flowing both ways and and get down to the heart of the issue at hand, um, there are a couple of them that I can't get past. Um, and there are a couple of reasons on the on the pro side that that I I agree with. And in the end, um, what we have here is we've got a lot of people that feel really strongly about this issue. And I am a, I'm a big fan of hearing from people, and I've heard from a lot of them. And I'm a big fan of of a referendum that'll address this issue, whether it's advisory or not, I don't care. I want people to be heard, and I want them to be heard in a format that they are comfortable being heard. And I feel like the only way I could vote today for the uh uh for the ordinance as presented is if it's tied directly to a referendum.
Well, I I I have some comments and I'm going to apologize ahead of time. I'm gonna, it's, it's gonna be detailed and somewhat longer than I usually do. Um, I'm going to be extremely honest and try to base things on facts. Um, so I'd like to start all with uh this particular issue. Has had incredible discussion at committee and board level. At the board, we have had this on the agenda, ninth, third time. Parks has talked about it at two meetings, public safety has talked about it at four meetings. On the justification for me, and I'm speaking for myself, is there's some history here that I think people are forgetting a little bit. Um, I moved into Cross Plains in the nineties. The first activity that I was involved in having to do with the village was I was on a task force to find three locations for a business park. Uh, we accomplished that, there was incredible resistance at every location, so it was dropped. Couple of years later, I was on a committee to bring Sunny Industry to Cross Plains. Uh, as you know, there was incredible resistance for that, they met, went to Mesa May. There's been a number of other during the last two decades to try to get a business park for economic development. And it's always been resistant uh to that. So about seven, eight years ago, the board decided with the reality of the cricks and the hills and the resistance to a business park that we are no longer going to go down that path. At the same time, tourism in Wisconsin was increasing at a great clip. The board decided we were going to go after the tourism dollars, that was gonna be. To do that, you kinda needed a niche and a branding. And the board decided, it was no secret, the niche that we were looking at or the branding that we were putting out for Cross Plains is, hey, we're the center of outdoor recreation activity. There's no secret, every time you drive into Cross Plains, you see our sign, it shows fishing, hiking, biking, and snowmobiling. When you drive down Main Street, the banners that you see on the light poles say, come and enjoy. That is a marketing tool for the fifteen to sixteen thousand cars that drive through our village every year. That is what we were trying to capture, we were trying to capture the tourism dollars with looking at outdoor activity. You look at a lot of the things we've done, we have greatly improved uh that branding. I believe this fits into that branding. I do believe ATVs, UTVs is a recre, outdoor recreational activity. If you do any of the reading, I'm sure most of you have, it is a growing activity in the state of Wisconsin. Okay? Our marketing report, we spend money on these reports, they talk about the same thing, tourism. Find a niche, find a branding, all right, we made that commitment, it's no secret, we've done that. I think it's our job to move forward with it and try it, all right? The risks that were taken here, I consider extremely low. We're not cutting edge with this ordinance, we're not trying something new that no one else, and we're the forefront that we're taking this great risk. There's a, there's a lot of information out there where these ordinances have been successful. All right, so the risk is low there, there's no cost to the taxpayer here. There's no risk for for the financial part. It's no investment, we don't have to build a park, we don't have to build a boardwalk, we don't have to do anything to give this a try. And we have a one-year trial, one year. If it doesn't work, I'll be the first to let the ordinance die or vote against it. But I cannot come up with a good reason not to try this. It's a trial of one year. If it doesn't work and it goes away, no one will know the difference. It's not like it's gonna have a long impact on anything in this community to give this a try. I I think um I can't personally come up with a good reason not to give it a try. It fits in with what our long-term mission and goal was when it comes to economic development. Now, do I know how many dollars it's going to bring? No, I don't. Do I think anybody else can tell me how much it's gonna bring in? No, it's all speculation. Is it gonna make people rich and are we gonna have business popping up all over the village? No. But at these times, even a little bit more business, I think will be helpful and appreciated. Then we have what I call the sister ordinance for this. And that, and that's fifty-one point one five, and that's for uh electric vehicle. And I'm telling you right now, it has some of the same requirements that uh we've just talked about. You already have an ordinance, if you look at these, these are, these are street ready electric vehicle, any one of us can buy one of these for about ten thousand dollars and drive it tomorrow on any one of our street, including Main Street. So it's not like we're trying something even new here in 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 the village, we haven't. Um, now, I've heard a lot of talk and I've received a lot of emails on a referendum. And I have strong feelings on that too. I think referendums should only be used in very, very unique situations. I do not believe this is the situation for. I have concerns with the community health, with the cost and staff time, and the actual need to have a referendum. I think when this started, I think we had a healthy community discussion on the issue. I think it has clearly crossed the line where it's no longer healthy. And I cannot support anything that would prolong that, all right? That is my stand. We have heard just on this issue, think about the debate that's going to happen when we try to come up with the wording, all right? Think about the debates we're gonna have on the educational component that we have to have when you do a referendum. And that brings me to the staff. Right now, this has been a community discussion. When you formalize it by going to referendum, you are now taking that and throwing it on to village staff and the policymakers, which is us. All right, I have heard at the candidate forum and from many, many people on how busy our staff is, especially our administrator. This throws a huge burden. You look at the statute that are required, now that it's formal, there's statutes that you have to follow, that's gonna fall on our administrator. There's statutes that require the people who are opposed to the referendum and support of the referendum to have to do filing and reporting, that falls on our administrator to put that together. It will be our board decision on what the wording is, so we'll have to work on that. You need to have an educational component when you have a referendum. Right, you have to educate the community on it. I can tell you that will be a battle on what is said there. So from this, the the point now, it's not just the time that staff will work on it. It's what they will not be working on it that I think is far more important. So I have a list of what I believe are higher priorities for staff and for us to be working on. Number one, which I mentioned already and we're making a form, is the the whole coronavirus and its impact on this community, including the findings. This is not something that can wait or be put off, this needs to be worked on now and we need everybody that all our department had to work on this with us, including that. We have an extremely important election in November. We have to come up with a new spot, we have to come up with the system, and we have to work out the issues that we had in the spring election. That has to be done. We have water utility to work out, we're putting in a new well. The public needs to know, if they haven't, is right now, we have, if our our large well gets contaminated or goes down, we have two to four days of water and then we will not be able to provide twenty-four seven water to this village, all right? On top of that, not new to everybody, we have to figure out where the losses is in that water. The last time we did it, we're still at about forty-six percent. So we need to, one, we need to get ourselves eligible for the Clean Water Act loan program. We need to get hammered down on the well, the educational part of that, the location of that, all of that needs to be worked on. We just have been working on the flood mitigation. Flooding is a problem, we're in the middle of projects that are in the four to five million dollars. We're writing for grants, trying to get funding for it, we're trying to negotiate with landowners. It's an incredible amount of work, that has a time limit on it. We need to, I have already mentioned this, if this was in the City of Madison project, there would be a full-time person assigned to it. Yep, we have our administrator working on it. One thing that has dropped down on the list, and at the beginning of the year it was number one, is the twenty-twenty census. We haven't even talked about that, we have one shot every ten years to get that right. I haven't even been keeping track of where we're at with the census on that. But we have to make sure that is done right, and that's gonna take time. We have three major developments coming in. We all know how difficult it is to go through them, they're two hundred and some pages long, very detailed, we have one shot to get it right. So I personally do not want staff to work on anything besides those priorities, including their day-to-day work of providing the services that are needed in Cross Plains. So let's talk about this whole thing on making sure people have a right to give their opinion and not be bullied or anything. We just came off a spring election. Okay, I'm gonna be honest, there is no doubt, the group that was opposed to the or uh, to the ATV, UTV, came out, came out with a slate of candidates. It was very clear, there were editorials, there was comments on the street, there were signs out there. They clearly came out with an opportunity for people to vote for, if it was that strong, this slate of candidates. And my guess is, and I'm pretty confident in it, if that slate of candidates would have won, there would be no talk of a referendum. All right, there was an opportunity for people indirectly to vote for this, and it was not a secret, you didn't have to know. Now let's take a look at the petition. We have one petition that's against, two hundred and eight. Uh, we had another petition that was for three hundred and sixty-six. So we had five hundred and seventy-four people signed petition. The number of people who voted in the spring election was one thousand four hundred and eighty-eight. That means thirty-nine percent of the people who voted potentially signed a petition. All right, I think that's it. When you look at the spring election, let's take a look at that. So you have one thousand four hundred and eighty-eight voters. So everybody can vote for three people. That means there's a potential number of votes of four thousand four hundred and sixty-four. For voting for trustees, there was two thousand nine hundred and eighty-nine, sixty-seven percent. Okay, sixty-seven, so basically people voted for two people, in general, all right? The highest vote getter, which you, out of what you could potentially, if everybody voted for you, you know, the one thousand four hundred and eighty-eight vote, the highest vote getter ended up getting fifty-four percent of what one could have. So I am sorry that I don't buy that there's this huge anti ATV, UTV. If it's the case, it didn't show up at the spring election, and we had quite a few people show up. I think this is a split, I think there's strong advocates on both sides. I think the majority of residents are worried about one through six that I mentioned, and the things that are, the issues that they're dealing probably with their own situation because of the coronavirus. So I think we need this to be put into perspect, perspective. And I think we have had numerous discussions, I don't think there's gonna be anything new coming out of future discussions on this. As Seth Johnson put it in his thing, it is time for us to do our job. And the thing is that everybody should be comfortable with, the decision you're making is for one year. It's not a lifetime decision, it's not something that is going to affect this village forever, and if it doesn't work out, we're gonna have to redo it. All right? I wanna just point out, the last point is the last time we had a referendum, it was in twenty-eleven, if you remember, it was to fix up Mill Creek Way, move the creek and the bike pit. It was voted down, six hundred and some votes to four hundred and some votes. It was voted down, 600 and some votes to 400 and some votes. The board still approved it. If you look at what they did, I can't believe anybody would say that was a bad decision. If you go down to Xander Park right now and on weekends, it is packed. It is the jewel of Cross Plains right now. It is absolutely gorgeous. If we would have gone, if, not me, because I was on it. If the board had not continued to go down that path, it's very possible that that will not, would not be there. So I, I, I ask the board, you have the information, you have talked to people, there's been tons of data, 200 and some pages worth to read. I think it's time now that we vote. And it's time to move the village forward and for us to get on to these, what I consider, and again, I'm speaking for myself, higher priorities for the village. I apologize for taking too much time, but I felt it needed to be said. Anybody else would like to comment?
Yep. Bill? All right, that was a lot. Starting with the tourism. You're kind of on tourism. Do we have any sort of statistics of what, uh, how, how much revenue tourism has been brought into villages, let's say, the last 20 years since this has been a thing?
I'm not aware of it. I don't know.
Okay, so we don't know, so we're still, we, we're still at,
unless we wanted,
we, we don't know.
No, no.
So, but I would rather, I would rather go back to what you were trying to do earlier and create a, uh, uh, office park. You know, uh, and, and do that. I mean, I know it was a big fight against that, I know it was, before I died, of being on the board, but I would rather see this going out because I think that's a better route for us individually. But regardless, I'm just kinda responding to your points.
Okay.
Um, uh, the, the Black Rose Creek, that's why I ran to the village board? Because that is the issue why I ran, because 600 people said that they didn't want us to do that. And 400 said that they did, and the village board did it regardless. Now, do I think it's a good thing? I, I think, I don't know, because I do know that, um, I don't know if the fish have come back like they were before. Uh, I don't know the answer to that. But I know that for a while, after we stripped all the trees out there and we, and we re-meandered the creek, the fishing population in that stretch was, was low. And there was articles about it, about it. So, and, you know, at the end of the day, was it a good thing to do? I don't know, but yes, people are down there all the time. I agree with that, I'm down there. I saw an interesting, I saw an interesting article in the Wisconsin State Journal back in May 16th, Saturday, May 16th. They talked about, and again, this is mass. They talked about, um, Renee Callaway. She's the Madison pedestrian bicycle administrator. And she said throughout Bay County, it appears that people are getting out for walking bike, especially as the weather improves. That's why what they're doing is they are restricting, closing down motorized traffic uh, at Tinn Park, over there at Rhythm, and over at Sherman Avenue. Now, we're not doing that here for those Cross Plains, but I will say that there are little people out walking all the time, way more than they were back this time last year, way more. We do not have sidewalks for people to walk out into the village. Very few sidewalks for people to walk out of the village. I would almost be, uh, uh, I would almost see UTV on 14 because we have sidewalks on both sides and it keeps the pedestrians safer. So, uh, I'm not saying we close out streets and motorized vehicles, but I know that, uh, this Renee Callaway, that is a concern that people aren't getting out and out about her in the streets. I think this is for a very small group of people. I don't think this is for a very large group of people that are, are wanting to take advantage of this. Uh, I think there is, uh, and I could be wrong with that. I know there's 330, there's 360 plus people that signed a petition that wanted to do this. Uh, and I don't know how big the ATV car is. But, uh, in my opinion, uh, I think people are concerned about noise and they're concerned about safety. Uh, there was a, uh, there was an email that we got, uh, that I received, um, I would think you trustees received it as well, that said, uh, he lived up in the northern part of Wisconsin that had this and he hated it because of the noise and the fumes from the exhaust. Um, and, and how, and how much people were all around on ATVs. It was just, it was not a pleasant area for them to be around. I think that is a fear that people have. Uh, and so, I understand this is for a one-year trial. Uh, and people are afraid that, uh, of, of the noise and the, and the fumes and all that. But I, I think there's enough people in the village that, that I would not be for this.
Judy?
Um, as far as, we call it Lagoon Street. I was on the board at that point in time. One of the reasons we didn't do the referendum was actually for the cost. Because of the, when we voted it down, um, it was because it saved us by voting no for the board to do the Lagoon Street when the, um, when the DNR found out, or the, um, not DNR, but the vote found out we were doing it, they came up with $5 million. So that referendum did save us about $5 million, but then we still ended up doing it because of the cost. That was all about a cost thing. And I'm not for referendums unless there's a reason because of cost. I mean, I feel like if we start saying we're gonna do referendums, then when they wanna do a dog park, then when they wanna do the bikes, and then when they wanna do whatever, they're gonna come to us for everything we do, they're gonna want a referendum, anything. And that's not what we're voted for. We are voted to make decisions and not make friends, but make decisions. Because you're right, I'm friends on both sides too, and it's hard to clear it. Um, I'm supporting it because it's for a sunset, it's a sunset thing, so it's not, you know what, and all of a sudden, if the police chief, I trust him and his staff, if all of a sudden he comes and says, "This is it, we gotta shut it down because community people are violating it", we're gonna shut it down. We might not even make it a year. And if we have too many violators, it won't make it a year. I know that, I know it won't. Um, I feel like actually, you're not much louder than a motorcycle. Some of my kids is trucks. I think it's more dangerous seeing the skateboarders coming down Church Street in front of my house. They don't have brakes. And I'm waiting for someone, well, come on Valley Street and it's a skateboarder. Those skateboarders really scare me, they're more dangerous than these. I feel like this is like a vehicle that has brakes, it can go the speed limit. I don't feel like they're dangerous, actually. Um, as far as the business part goes, if we wanna think about that somewhere down the road, I, I would be more than happy to. But you're right, we have been advertising, advertising, the chambers have been advertising. We, we market, our brand is, when you come into town, the hiking, fishing, the snowmobiling, and all doors. Because the creek is our, is our jewel. It is, it is our jewel. That's it, so I support you.
Hey Lori?
Um, I just wanna say that, um, I feel the branding of Cross Plains is huge and the hiking, biking, um, you know, cross-country skiing, all of that is huge for our community. And I also think that some people enjoy other events that, you know what, I love UTV, I love ATV. Am I gonna get on my UTV, ATV and ride through town? Probably not. That's not how I enjoy it. I think, um, a lot of people, um, might be getting the wrong impression that there's a lot of people who are just gonna be running downtown with these ATVs. And I think that's why we need to give this a try is that, um, it is a branding issue. Tourism, we can hope that Cross Plains can bring money in. Like Jay said, our budget is horrifying. And if this can bring us 10 more dollars to every business in town, that's 10 more dollars than what they had in the last three months. Um, it's a year. And like Judy just said, we can shut it down in a week or two weeks, but why won't we give it a chance? Um, the danger, the safety, down at my 7321 office, there's 10, 12 kids jumping off the bridge at the creek. That's not dangerous. I mean, we cannot protect every individual as much as we would like to. We take the chances every day getting in our vehicle and getting on the ATV and UTVs. You have to have a class. You cannot just get on these. Um, we have a great police department who's gonna get us through this. And I think that it's just important, um, for us to be open, open-minded about issues. And I get people on both sides of this and it's torn this community apart. The emails I'm getting are horrifying and it's from both sides. And I think that we need to come together as a village and feel like we've made a good decision. And I hope the people in our village don't attack us personally because of this decision that we made. This has been a very difficult decision. And I think for everyone sitting on this board, it's gonna be very difficult. But we're doing what we feel our heart needs to do and what people voted us in to do.
Any other comments for discussion? All right, so we have the motion that was originally stated with all the amendments, changes to the language. So we will be voting on the original amendment and we will do a roll call. Trustee, can you call?
No.
Trustee, on custody?
I wanted a clarification, what is the original amendment?
The original amendment was, uh, the thing that Bill put together.
Okay, the entire,
it had to be C.
Right, okay.
56.02C, what we all went through and then followed the change.
But is this approving this as an ordinance or sending it to the attorney for?
No, it's, we're passing to allow it, it goes to the, uh, attorney to review and write it out properly and then it has to be posted. But you, make no doubt, it's not coming back again.
Okay, that was what I was curious about.
Yeah, no, we're voting on it and this is it.
So just to be clear on it, vote on it, go to the attorney, once it's put in file format, it's supposed to be posted, presented.
Yep.
Okay, uh, I vote yes. But, um, I just gotta, what you said now is different than what we said earlier because we had some questions that we need to ask Brooklyn.
Right, right, he's gonna clarify it now, but we cleared it. If it can be in there, it's staying. If it has to be removed, it's be removed. No. Trustee, count of 11?
Yes.
Trustee, Rosie?
No.
Trustee, Vander?
Yes.
President, I'm, yes. Motion carries. All right, next item on the agenda is number two. Discussion and possible action regarding a conditional use permit application for 1, for 4001 Creek Sideway.
Just give me a minute, I'll switch over.
Yep.
Um, before we go on to the, um, to the next subject, um, I don't think you addressed the question of a resolution.
Right, and actually, right, and did I miss something? Yeah, what are you looking at?
I thought I had motion that we send this to resolution in November.
I'll second that. Okay. Discussion. Again, I made my point, I think it's unhealthy for this community. It's unnecessary, as far as I'm concerned, and people have voted in the spring election on this issue. I think, I would like to know from the people who support this, which one of these priorities you feel this goes above that staff can work on? I think that's part of it, I just don't think it's a good move. It's unnecessary and not doing our job.
My, my reason for the referendum is to hear from people, Jay. Uh, is to hear, uh, what they have to say in a way that they can say it and vote however they wanna vote. The cost we saw from Bill is minimal cost, money-wise. Time-wise, we're all busy, heat busy and a lot of things. Uh, I think it's more important that we hear from people and that they believe that they're heard from. And that's why I'm supporting a referendum.
And I, I, I guess what I'm saying is, I've heard from a ton of people, you've heard from a ton of people. They can still contact you, they contact, I don't know who else is gonna contact you that hasn't contacted you for the last three months. And most of what I've heard is referendum, referendum, referendum. Well, I, I, they're contacting you with that and I'm listening to it. Okay, very good, so we have 366 people that signed a petition the other way. Well, great, then they shouldn't worry about a referendum.
Right, then you shouldn't worry, a lot of the people, not a lot, but the people, you know, I think if you wanna go and get the senior and high school adult children to also sign a petition, the opposition didn't do that, they certainly could get those numbers if they go and get all the high school seniors to sign it also. Secondly, what, what really concerns me is the actual documented threatening behavior that the police know about and all citations were written. Nothing's been done except for this board basically rewarding bullying and the inappropriate unsafe behavior that's going on in this village that you're endorsing.
No, now Sarah, I'm gonna call you out on this, I apologize. Just because I'm endorsing a public policy does not mean I'm endorsing individuals that have not followed good conduct or has broken the law. I, I'm going to say that I resent that comment because I have comments from the other side that feels the pro have done negative things and I'm not blaming you for that.
But as to the president, what would be done about the village trustee who also engaged in the behavior on the record? Nothing. I think the referendum is a way for people to feel that they can, they can equally be heard.
And Sarah, I'm gonna not get into detail because it's a personal matter. I'm telling you, you're dead wrong. Action was taken on that and I'm not gonna speak to it. But again, you're speaking without knowing the facts.
No.
Because some things that are personal and when they're handled a certain way, I have to follow the law and the ordinance, okay? I am not gonna do and break the same ordinances that you're complaining about. So it has been dealt with. For you to say I did nothing,
but the perception matters, perceptions matter, Jay.
Then you should contact me outside a public meeting and ask about it. But what you're doing just accused me of not doing anything. And that is dead wrong. That is absolutely wrong.
I appreciate the clarification.
What?
About the village residents, however.
I can tell you, and you're just gonna have to go with my word, that that has been looked into and dealt with. Okay, it has gone through what ordinance has required. Okay?
But my question, my, not a question, but people know about it and they feel intimidated. So whether or not action is taken, people feel intimidated. And that matters to me.
Well, sure, I, I, and it matters to me too. But I, I, I think mattering is good, accusing is doing no different than what you're accusing someone else of doing.
I can absolutely agree with that and I apologize.
All right.
I just have a, a change in content or comments since I was brought into it. First of all, I also take personal offense to it, so I'm gonna call you out on that. Um, that complaint, we have one complaint, one citizen said that they felt threatened. However, they wanted, they chose nothing to be done. Okay, so that, so, so plain and simple, they did not want us to proceed with that. If we proceed as law predicts, that accused person has a right to find out who they are and all those things. They wanted me to protect their identity, which I did, so.
That was the one, because people are afraid to call the police.
That's ridiculous because you just said, and I, I, we can bring up the quotes, you said that we have a great department and people do call us for everything, so.
I didn't say that, but we know about the additional person that had uh, property in their house, in front of their house torn up, that they didn't call the police because they were afraid. We had the individual that works at Card Elementary that got threatened, phone call. and was and said, I'm afraid to call the police. So that intimidation factor keeps people from contacting you. Because of, exactly because of what you're going to say.
Okay, I, I think we're going on the, the subject here a little bit. So I, I, I would ask that we keep the discussion through the referendum. I think we've said enough on, on this part of it. So.
Um, I think as far as the educational, educational component, I think there's enough, there's enough people, we've seen a lot of stuff on both sides that would, that would have their own educational component to this, I don't think the bills would have to put any best time in order to do the educational component of this. Because it would be highly highly advertised and Bill, when it becomes a referendum, you have to have an educational component of the referendum. Laurie?
I just want to say that um I feel like we have been dealing with this for months. Uh, since I was first on the board, I was on public safety and we were talking about the ATV, UTV. And um our community has become so divided by this and waiting until November for all of it to continue when we have all been educated. Every one of us have been educated on this. And it's unfortunate that people have gone to the extreme of threatening people. That's happening on both sides, I get emails where I'm appalled that adults would act like this. And we were elected to make decisions on this board. And I don't understand why we are all fighting amongst ourselves.
Alright, any other discussion? So we have an amendment, uh, a motion, they have a referendum in, in uh November second. Discussion, we're going to do a roll call vote on this.
Trustee Rosias?
Yes.
Trustee Popkowski?
No.
Trustee.
Yes.
Trustee Vander?
No.
Trustee Rosias?
Yes.
Trustee Campbell?
No.
No. Motion fails. Mike?
Thank you. I didn't realize that they already had a chance to talk to each other before. Um, I think the board should understand that people have prior decision of our referendum, that's up to the citizens as well. So expect this.
Oh, that's fine.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying, you know, it's not over till.
You're absolutely correct, and that's a beautiful thing about a democracy.
Thank you all.
Yeah. Is there, wow, that's over my head. We are on page.
Wait, what?
Page PDF two sixty-three. So we're back to number two. Discussion and possible action regarding conditional use permit application for four thousand one Creek Sideways.
Okay, so you want a presentation?
Let's see, the document.
Yeah, so it's the same contractor uh have gotten a uh planning commission, uh request for a condition currently application for uh a real process or under that toll for uh which is allowed area. Uh, was seen by the planning commission earlier this month, uh recommended for approval. Uh, so notice this was sent out to neighbors, attorney neighbors within a hundred feet and all this in the newspaper. Recommendation for a perol. The condition, famous previous uh perol's that applicants must obtain all necessary permits and that have by, by all.
I'll make the motion that we approve the conditional use permit application for four thousand one Creek Sideway. Second. Alright, I have a motion in a second to uh accept the conditional use permit application or all approve the conditional use permit for four thousand one Creek Sideway, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same, so moved. Alright, number three, discussion and possible action to amend this specific implementation plan for fifteen oh four Main Street Midtown construction.
I make the motion to approve the implemented plan on fifteen oh four Main Street from this trust.
One second.
Okay, I have a second, I have a motion in a second. Any discussion?
I have a few questions.
Alright.
Alright, um. What did it say? Yeah, specifically, they were talking uh that plan commission did this, that, that and declining number five from the ball request, item number five can be addressed by staff. I'm asking for clarification on what that means with regard to item number five and the three items included underneath that six, seven and eight.
Yeah, so item number five is requested by the applicant in regards to replacement of everybody's on east end of the property, uh they were removed during construction, how I would work team. Uh, and was uh say, although it was to replace those item. Uh, plan commission felt because uh was not specific language regards to replacing uh in the original uh specific implementation plan that really doesn't need to be addressed by.
Okay, so that you guys are going to replace the everybody on staff, is this going to do that? Because you said you're going to do that before.
Correct.
Okay, um, so now I'm asking specifically about six, asking about the east-west fence being installed. I mean, number five dealt with the fence being installed, the other one being with an exterior business sign being constructed. And I mean, is that what number five is what you're referring to in the packet on?
No.
Page two eighty-five because.
Yeah, it's the number five, they talk about that. So this is a property right here. Um, and so what happens and, and applicant here, that's a clip there. When people get onto the, the border logging trail, they kind of cut through this section here.
Right.
And so what they had asked for is the fence going east to west, somewhere along this building to stop uh people from walking through their, their property. That line is, you can see that line of everybody's over here.
Right. So what are they doing exactly? You're, you're going to plant the plants there or?
Well, the plants will be replaced along this section. That was taken out by, as part of a fourteen construction. That fence going east to west from a tree line to a building.
Okay, so they're just installing a fence that's going to be eighteen feet in length and meet village fencing standards, is that what you're saying?
Right.
A fence permit for that, so have they expressed any sort of fence that they're going to be installing along there, what type it is going to be?
I believe, only thing that they have at this point is what is a very letter. I don't have a drawing here.
Yeah, there wasn't anything specific given, I don't.
I think they were talking at plan of all six feet. They're stopping, trying to stop people from cutting through, so a four-foot one, people would just step over, I'm guessing.
Sure, I understand that, I guess I'm curious about is what it's going to be, its material. We've been having, well, there's nothing specific in the SIP, we've been having businesses putting fences along Main Street, one being Hooties, one being nineteen oh nine. Those are nice-looking fences, I know this, I don't know where this exact placement, placement is going to be. In this area, if you read our uh if you read the village's comprehensive plan, it talks about limiting the use of chain-linked fence in the village. I'm inquiring if it's going to be a chain-linked fence. Sure.
I really don't have a plan that is not cheap like I was thinking something, whether it's wood. It was just conceptual like that.
Sure.
I wasn't going to spend a lot of time designing it. It was just dead in the water and made of water. They need.
Meaning the village, right. Okay, so then, you're not, can I make an amendment to this to say that no chain-linked fence can be put on this property?
Sure.
Is that fine, so that it can't be one? Yes, that is a motion.
Second. Alright, so I have a discussion to change the wording in the original uh motion to say no chain-linked fence.
Is that in our ordinance, that there tends to be, or?
Yeah, yeah, he's talking about there's, the plan was trying to reduce that and get more decorative and seeming, so it just looks nicer.
Right, I just.
But it's not, it's not an ordinance or a toll.
So currently, the way that it's set up and that it's a plan that all went for stuff. The specific plan that you are approving is the same code for this problem.
So, but, oh, sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
I was going to say that the general zoning ordinance would allow a chain-linked fence in this area if, I don't specifically exclude one being put there.
Right.
I don't think so, this property, if you remember the history to it, it was the old fire station. There was a heck of a battle when Midtown wanted to go in. So it became a separate where you needed to have this plan, so the zoning is the plan. So he can't really do anything to change things unless he comes here and actually changes the plan.
So. Right.
Your, your, your motion does tell him that in his plan, he can't use a chain like that.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Yeah.
I just don't want it to be a burden, you know, a chain-linked fence is a cheaper alternative and. Okay, I just want to make sure that we're not putting a burden on you and.
Oh, that's fine, but that's, that's why it has to happen.
Okay.
Alright, so I have, I have a motion, I have it second, any other discussion?
Is about this one because I'm going to.
No, no, we have to speak on this.
Okay.
If you did a motion on it.
Yep.
Alright, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same. So now we're adding that to the original motion. Alright, go ahead.
Now I have another question, so then you are wanting to include in the SIP, the exterior business sign being placed on that yard, you would like that in there. I have a concern about that because in your first SIP, you say that your signage is going to be your awning signage. So you are now augmenting that with allowing this signage as well, so you could have two signage capabilities? Or is that previous one being removed? Or what? That's what I don't know, I guess if you're saying you're going to be, okay, well, I'm going to make a motion because, I'll make a motion, no discussion, I make a motion to remove number seven and not allow an exterior business sign located in the grass area.
I have a second. Okay, there's no second, motion fails.
Alright, well, we're still in discussion over, so I can still talk.
Yeah, yeah, well, you're in the discussion of the room, I'm just saying your motion was in second, so that it's dead.
Right, okay. So I can't continue?
Well, you can, well, if you want to talk more about it, it's fine, but.
I, I'd like to get more uh reasons why, as well, as I was waiting.
He can't have a discussion, you don't get a second.
But we're in discussion over the overall thing. Yeah, which this is part of that, so I can still talk about it.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, rationale being this uh property is located in a residential area where I don't think that an external business sign being located out in front of the yard when there are houses on all sides of it. If you, right, I think the original signage design was done so that it's on building signage and not freestanding signage. Freestanding signage places it out in that grass area. On building signage, it's placing the signage on the building so that it's not a sign out in the general neighborhood that exists there along Main Street, because it is a residential area. You go and look at this property, it's surrounded by houses all around, there isn't a sign anywhere except for the two signs that are on the awning, which is why in the original uh specific implementation plan, I think that it had's awning signage, which is on building signage. And not a freestanding sign out where this is located, which I think that location would be much better situated for a tree to be planted there rather than a sign to be placed there. Also, today when I went down there when I was looking at the stop sign and I was parked there, uh, the parking lot is there on the right side, there were two trucks for your business that were parked there, I was sitting at the stop sign. And if you place a freestanding sign down in that zone, in that grass area there, I'm sitting here trying to look out with those trucks, I cannot see any traffic coming from the right way, coming down the road. I mean, it would have been completely blocked if that sign was placed because the trucks were there, you would have no visibility to the right side.
Well.
And I'm just.
I just want to, I, I, I'm not sure, um I know how you know this, do you know exactly where the sign is going to be and how it's going to be made and how it's going to be designed?
I.
I mean, how do you know it's not going to be up over the view and I think there's zoning on the view that you have to have on, on corners and stuff, I, I, and not that you're wrong, it's just that I don't know, but when the design comes in, those are the things we're going to need to look at. But I, I'm thinking you're making some, maybe making some assumptions that are not necessarily going to happen.
I, can I, can I step in here?
Sure.
So. When this discussion, yeah, there was, had been no design yet for a sign. I don't think, I don't think Cory even knew if you wanted to. The, the reason for putting it in was so that future, he decided to put in a sign, he wouldn't have to come back and amend this specific implementation plan. Because this has had so much attention in the past, uh the way to public hearing, there's a, a two hundred and fifty dollar cost fee for uh changing the site plan. There's a five hundred dollar fee for changing the whole plan. And then, uh, so the, the plan commission seen that, had, saw that as a potential you know, or at the time. And so the language in a specific implementation plan states that uh, the developer and the pitcher who decided to report on that, but still have to uh submit the sign for approval uh through villages, in a small code, we have an independent cycle from uh the plan development. And, and to speak to, uh so you're, you're speaking about what we call a vision triangle for traffic and safety. And I agree with you, uh, you know, there's going to be some interference there, so depending on what type of sign it is, um, we're going to have to make sure that it applies with, with both subjects. As, um currently, that one area allows where to be setback a bit. And so that, that would be addressed as part of that approval. Again, I, I don't think, and Cory can answer this, but I don't think that, that there are plans out there currently in regards to the detail of it. And the same thing with point eight, uh I don't know if he, you know, it didn't seem like he had a plan in time where, whether or not he wanted to expand on the building at this point, but in order to save fine dollars, uh, and coming back or additional meeting, plan mission call. About that, putting this language in there, but it says, providing that there's no checking balance where there's a, a review by the plan commission.
Right, and I understand all that, that this is being placed so that he doesn't come to come back and adjust the specific implementation plan, but I'm just trying to make the point that I don't think that since we can adjust a specific implementation plan, that that is an accurate place to be placing a sign, is the point that I'm trying to make. I think that the sign exists fine being a non-building silent with what currently exists and even though he doesn't have plans to do and it doesn't say that the place is going to be sold and somebody else might, I'm just trying to completely exclude it from the specific against the implementation plan, is what I'm trying to do. Trying to reduce, reduce the signage, I mean, down Main Street and in that residential area.
Alright, we, we've already, I guess we've heard you now, we got. Alright, we've already, I guess we've heard you now, we got. Any other questions on this? Alright, uh, we'll have to do a little poll.
Okay, this is for the approval of a specific implementation plan of 1504 East Street, downtown, session. Uh, amendment of a motion. Trusty Tom, how's he?
Uh, no.
Trusty France, what?
This is to approve it with no chain link funds.
Correct, correct.
Um, yes.
Trusty Xander?
Yes.
Trusty Rosas?
Yes.
Trusty. Trusty Fitzhugh?
Yes.
By the way.
Yes.
Motion carries. Alright, discussion and possible action regarding a residential chicken coop license. For thirty sixteen East End.
I make a motion, we approve the chicken coop license application from day fifth, the thirty sixteen East End.
Second.
Alright, any discussion? We're actually approving the actual permit.
Right, right.
As wanted, uh, the vote is drawn, we just send notification now to everyone within. Uh, two hundred feet of this property, I did not receive any objection below the call regardless of. It is people for regards to setback regulation. Particularly on the, the, this particular regulation. Uh, and we have our ordinance states that there is any. Any claim in regards to.
Is this a purely license application?
Yeah.
Okay, well, we don't vote on it every day. We vote on once and that, and then they, they just renew it.
Okay.
That's the same thing. No, he's, he's the same thing.
Yeah.
Thanks for reading my mind. I had a little something to do with voting, so.
What's the setback? I think it's one of the.
Okay, property, right?
Yeah. See, it explains that that regulation.
Alright, I have a motion, a second, any other discussion? Alright, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same, so move. More chickens. Alright, discussion and possible action regarding, regarding a request for sewer bill adjustments from one oh two Ziegler Court.
Well, this was a request that we had from the property owner, uh, he had found. Um, that someone had turned on the. Water smell. And when he had noticed it, he waited for the, he told me he'll come back. Extremely high for residential property. He asked that, uh, facilities, we're gonna look into the matter. Uh, and his report is second. For East Street, or our policy allows for the rolling board to go for credit, uh, for certain toy fees, uh, in these situations. Yeah, thanks for the thoughts in the past.
Alright, do, do I have a motion?
Somebody can motion to give a hundred and ten dollar credit to, uh, Brian Coleman.
I second that motion.
Alright, any discussion? Alright, I have a motion. And a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Alright, number six. Discussion and possible action regarding solar farm memorandum from sustainability. Or we can, let's just get it on. Pretty straightforward. Alright, do I have a motion? And I guess the motion would be for them to continue to look into, uh, having solar farm. Placement in the village.
I motion that this.
Oh, yeah, Michael, you're on it.
I motion that the sustainability committee continues to further explore based with farm budget for the community across lanes.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a second, any discussion?
Well, I appreciate work that they're doing and, uh, I think it's great that they're moving forward.
My, my mic.
Oh.
Fall apart again. Okay, go ahead.
Right, I just wanted, you already, they copied the motion already, right? That was all done? Okay, so.
A motion by Michael Polakowski and second vice sheriff.
Yep, I just wanna make sure everybody hears the comments. I think you're doing an excellent job. Keep up the good work. Thank you. Yeah, this is what I didn't speak earlier. I knew this was on the agenda. This is just giving the sustainability committee a lot of to explore. Solar farm or implications in the village or surrounding properties to interact with the developer, things like that. Just letting you know what's going on.
Okay, Sarah, then Bill.
The required acreage, just because I don't really know much about this, is that part of it, can it be on buildings or does it need to have its own?
Those are questions that we're still like looking into whether or not we're gonna be able to find land or landowner wants to lease this land or. Putting it on rooftops of the buildings. Those are all questions that we don't really know.
But the answer is you can do both.
Yeah, absolutely.
The size of the array, it would have to be three big buildings that have a array. Well, yeah, but you could do multiple buildings, you know. Like the city mass and all the buildings now have solar, it has to be a zero.
Bill?
Uh, two things, um, one of the things I saw in the packet was. That village residents would be able to buy energy from the village. It's a pot, it's a potential possibility. Do you wanna actually get into? I mean, is that something?
Yeah, so.
Looking at?
So that's something that, that we would look into, uh, the sustainability committee will look into. I know that. Uh, you, they wouldn't, you, the, 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 the property owners wouldn't make, purchase it directly from the village, so the village wouldn't become a utility. I think that's what you're trying to get to. Uh, it would be from M G and E, because M G and E has the jurisdiction, but. The, the village would be the responsible party for generating that or owning the property or leasing the property. Uh, or the broker to get the energy to, um, M G and E as part of their rider program.
Okay.
Um, similar to what Middleton has done at the airport, Pittsburgh has done now. And so they do have a program to M G and E to allow for that, that community buy.
And I just think, when I did Midtown, if we're not using all our energy, if it goes to M G and E, they keep it and then people sign up for green energy, they then sell it.
Okay. And then, and then, uh, the committee's gonna, one of the things that I missed, and I'm, and I, only because you're looking more into it and gonna get it. Is, you know, what our cost is gonna be and what the return on investment's gonna be and that's, I'd be really interested in knowing that. I know it's early in the process, so.
Sometimes you can do a deal, you give them, you let them use the land and M G E puts it up and gives you so much electricity.
But that's, 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 that's what we're, that's what the committee's gonna find out.
Yeah, yeah, and focus on energy, a lot of times will give you, pay for some of that.
Well, I'm all for that. I just wanna be sure that we just have.
Alright, so we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Number seven. Discussion and possible action on ordinance number oh two twenty twenty regarding heavy traffic.
We're gonna take your, no, it's the next one.
Okay.
Yeah.
Perhaps, it looks like the recommendation section of the memo.
Right.
Is not meant for this page, so.
I apologize about that.
So I don't know what the recommendation is.
Yes, the, the recommendation from staff is to approve the ordinance, uh, as proposed.
I motion to approve the rewritten ordinance, code two there's twenty twenty. The repeal on recreation of section twenty one eleven C of the village, but one else concerning heavy traffic laws.
Now, let me just make sure I understand. The reason we did this was because bourbon was the whole thing. We changed, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I, I motioned.
Oh.
One second.
Okay, second discussion. Yes, it's my understanding that the ordinance pretty much stays the same, but when we did highway fourteen, we had to make bourbon a heavy truck route. We didn't pull it back after fourteen opened, so they're still using it. So what we're doing is you can only use it if you need to use it.
Like blackners or.
Right, yeah, if you, if you have a, a, uh, place of business on the route. Same as anywhere in the, in the village, that, that you'd be able to. You don't like a truck to get to that business. It's the drive-by traffic that's currently using bourbon road.
Yeah, I did a comparison, they're the exact same, it's just bourbon rules.
Alright, any other discussion? All in favor, oh, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, I'm trying to find it in here. Oh, but. There was, uh, in that there was a lot of other routes that are still active. I know we're just changing bourbon and I agree with that. But, uh, there's a lot of, like, I think parts of Park Street and other, other, uh, streets on. On that side of town are also considered truck route. Uh, I mean, is this a good time to reevaluate those and see if we still need those as heavy truck route? Uh, or do we just want to just continue just to focus on bourbon?
Well, my preference would be, we haven't received any complaints on all those. I think if you look at them, a lot of them are tied to businesses. Uh, I, I, I think that's something if somebody wants to take it on and look everything up and do it, but absolutely not tonight. But we've got complaints on bourbon, so I'd like to get that resolved, but you can certainly bring this up at another time. I just don't know how we would evaluate each of these tonight.
Well, I, I thought that the, the, in the memo that we got, a lot of it was based also on. The, the road is not built for heavy traffic, right? So, tell you what.
Well, I, I'll make a quick, I'll make just a quick comment. I think a lot of the sections on Park Street or north of highway fourteen.
Yep.
It's not a necessarily rural route for trucks, so you don't see a lot of trucks, even if it's in order, you don't see it.
Right.
Again, yeah, we should, we should definitely take a look at.
And we already have, you get from, you're from fourteen to where you need to go. I mean, that's already in our ordinance, we can do that, so.
If someone wants to take that, I just, we've got a lot to go yet tonight. I going through twenty, close to twenty streets and having a debate when we don't have.
No, 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 I didn't, I don't need to bring it up tonight, I just wanted.
Yeah, I would appreciate seeing a map. So I would like to see this come back at some point, not a big rush with the map. And we may be missing something. There's a business there that may be missed too, so.
Cause years ago, there might have been a business there. I always think like Esther's Moon Park Street. Maybe those businesses are gone, so maybe.
Sounds like a good thing for the plan commission.
Public safety?
Maybe public safety instead of plan. Alright, so we have a motion and a second. Uh, any other discussion? Alright, all in favor, say aye. Alright, all opposed, same, so move. We are going, we are not number eight. This financial stuff, I think, is gonna take some time. I'm gonna give, we're taking a break. Until nine forty five, forty seven, ten minute break.
I am so glad the ATV thing is done.
It's not done yet. But if they just come back right away, they're so used to people, dogs, you know, they're gonna eat no matter what. They won't fight with the dog right there.
Well, of course not, but that's all, if fishermen are by that area where I can pick my bus without them getting, you know, bite, then I'll, I'll, I'll go there, but if there's a fisherman there.
That's nice.
Yeah, but I don't feel very long.
I saw a couple of guys down on the park and they said that that stretch.
Yeah.
Um, well, in the middle across lanes is the best stretch of fishing all year.
Yeah, I, I was, you know, I took my youngest son, he's an adult, but he just started fishing, so he wanted to go the first time and, yeah, that's where we went. It was, there's a lot of fish in there.
So I'm gonna get my license.
Yeah, I kept one of them because I wanted to smoke it and see, and man, was that fantastic. I hung it in the smoker.
I almost buzzed one.
Then put it in the refrigerator and, and, oh, man, it's just better.
It's the only way I, I need one of them to be smoked.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
I've tried a number. Oh, really? Yeah.
Well, their fly shop was there to smoke water. Yeah.
I know, I know.
Well, like I say, you know, I wanted to try one just to see I ever smoked or. But it is. Well, we're all back. Did we wanna start two minutes earlier? I said nine forty seven? Or do we have to stay since I announced it? Well, I'm just thinking of people listening.
Yeah, that mean. We should probably wait.
Okay.
We still have quite a list of people that are.
Alright, we'll wait one more minute. Okay, it's nine forty seven, the board is back in session. We're at number eight. Discuss, discussion and possible action regarding the twenty nineteen final financial audit report.
Wanna short summary on this or?
Sure, go ahead.
Uh, so this was presented as a draft at the last meeting. Uh, there were some questions in regards to. Uh, what I would, what we call funds, uh, in the sewer, in the sewer, uh, utility and that, um. Particularly what, what had been in regards to the equipment replacement fund, sewer support fund, which was created. Um, and then the sewer connection fees and. The board had asked for a clarification of that, and so staff, um, has provided, um. Tables, uh, showing those funds and that was a part of. Your, uh. Packet.
It's not part of the audit.
It's not part of the audit, it's part of the packet, um, because, um, so that you could see that before approving the, the final audit. And so my understanding is that a final audit had been approved in previous years, and I believe there was some comment about bringing it back for final approval. And that's why, that's why it's here.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I make a motion to accept the audit for two thousand and nineteen.
I have a second.
I second that.
I have a motion and a second to approve the twenty nineteen final financial audit report. Is there any discussion? Alright, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same? Move. Alright, so now we're on to discussion and possible action regarding village financial policies. This is what I'd like to do for these is. Uh, we'll take them one at a time, but I would prefer having the discussion prior to approving, otherwise we're gonna be going potentially down the same route, a lot of amendment. So I would like for people to ask questions. Bobby, is she on?
Bobby is on.
Uh, if she wants us to take us through them, uh, and then after we have a discussion, we can do an amendment. That's. I would like to do, but if people feel, Bill?
We're not discussing twenty fourteen oh one and twenty fifteen oh two corrections. Those are already been. Those are already been passed by the village. So we're starting with 2020-01?
No, we're, all of them were taken.
So we're gonna, oh, okay, so this is a, we're gonna.
Okay. No, no, I just want to give some clarification. Some of these were passed, like, uh, the fund balance was passed in 2015. What we're looking at is, do we want to modify? You're correct. This has already been approved. But do we want to keep this as is, or do we want to make changes? Okay, that's why they're all here. We're looking at all the financial policies in 2020 and bring them to where this board feels comfortable with. So you're correct, they have been passed by previous boards, except for the new one. Sarah?
I'm sorry, could you repeat? You want us to just put a motion on for all at once?
No, we'll do each one, but I think what we should do is have Bobby go through it and then us discuss it and then make the recommendations. Because for example, in 2015, you know, I have some changes on here. And maybe someone else has changes. We'd have to go through the same process, an, an original one to accept this and then go through and make all of these other motions. I'd rather just have the discussion and hammer it because they're policies, not. So it's really how we want to work it. Uh, so that, that would be, I think, a more efficient way of doing. Okay, so why doesn't, uh, since this is Bob, Bobby's lead on this, why doesn't she tell us which one she wants to do first?
Yeah, right in order. And we can start with the investment policy one that was originally approved in 2014. So that basically just says what types of things we can invest in. Um, you know, making sure that we're reducing risks and doing good, safe investments.
Process three eighty-eight.
Okay, I, I did hard copies of these because I wrote notes. Okay, Bobby, the only question I have, page eight of, of that, are those financial institutions that list up to date?
It is not. It, um, does not include Incredible Bank, which was River Valley Bank when we took out some loans. Oh, what was it, 2017 or 18?
Okay. So, um, I, I, I think we need to keep this up to date. So is the People's Community Bank still around?
That's amazing, oh, yeah. And then Cross Plains Community Bank, obviously now is the Monona Bank.
And Park Bank, oh, that's, well, I'm sorry, Park Bank is still, but acre change.
Acre change, yeah.
No, I, I, I just really think we have to keep this up to date.
I, I had a comment.
Okay, Sarah?
I just noticed that appendix A was referenced but is not included for the 2014.
Wow, good catch. I didn't miss that.
Wisconsin statute sixty-six point oh six oh three.
Bobby, I don't know if you're hearing, uh, but you have a reference to, to appendix A and it's not in our package.
It wasn't attached.
It was not?
No, it's the investment restrictions.
Okay, I did not catch that.
Yeah, I lost from page six to page seven and it doesn't have a, it goes straight to appendix B.
So what is appendix A?
A.
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 Explains investment restrictions from the state statute.
Oh, okay. So it's a matter of getting a copy of the state statute tied to this. So, um, I guess anybody else have anything on, on this one?
Well, I guess I just have a general question for Bobby that pertains to this. Um, Bobby, are all the funds that the village currently has that are restricted or non-restricted still in that account that was set up at the Monona Bank? That goes out and goes to the Federal Reserve Bank at night, gets distributed overall over banks that was set up a few years ago?
Um, the investment sweep account?
Yeah.
ICS. Um, not all of it. We do have $750,000 in a CD. Um, that's mostly, it's all sewer fund money.
Okay.
Um, and that actually re, comes avail, or December of this year. We'll have to decide what to do with that money.
Right, so those are really the only two places where money is distributed right now?
Yep, um, we have a, currently it's under 2 million at State Bank Across Plains and that has a collateral, that's collateralized there.
Oh, we, the, the board recollateralized, collateralized some money there at that time?
We've always had a collateralization there. Like before we opened the Monona accounts. So we always kept, you know, a good chunk of money at State Bank. But then we opened up the ICS with Monona just to kind of diversify a little bit and have that sweeping earn a little more interest.
Do we earn interest at the State Bank Across Plains accounts?
Yes, um, I try to keep most of it in a money market account. And just keep a little, and where I watch the, um, the main account every day. I pretty much log into that and check and just keep in there enough to cover the checks we've written and then a little cushion. Cause that account does not earn a whole lot of interest. So I try to keep most of the money in accounts that are earning good interest rates.
Okay, are there any, uh, financial institution that we have borrowed money from that are not on this list? And I'm not talking about the bond issues. I'm talking about for many years, the smaller amounts we put out to bid at different banks that are.
Nope, the only ones we have are State Bank, Monona Bank, and then that Incredible Bank, River Valley Bank.
Do we do anything through, um, Bankers Bank? We used to. Do we still do anything through them?
We don't have anything local through them, no.
Okay, any other questions for Bobby? All right, so, um.
I have a question, but I'm not sure if it's for her or for the board.
Okay, we'll go first. I'm sorry, for anybody.
Okay, so for 2020-03, the capital planning policy?
Oh, no, we're not on there yet.
Oh, you were just talking about this.
This one, yeah, just this one.
Never mind.
Okay. So what I have is, uh, placing appendix A into this and updating the list of authorized financial institution.
Okay.
Okay, anyhow, that'll be our motion, but Bill?
So are we going to, uh, make this a new policy, another 2020 dash something policy? Are we going to keep it 2014 or?
Can I, my suggestion on policies, what I would do is have investment policy. Then down below, you have the date that it's last been updated. That, that's how most people do policies. You have the policy and then you have when the last time it was updated.
But funny with me.
Yeah, um, otherwise to answer your question, yeah, I would, if we're going to keep it this way, then I would, this, if we're using this format, then we should kind of move it to 2020. Cause it's no longer a 2014. Board voted on.
Right.
Kevin? No, oh, I'm sorry. So I guess I'm going to leave that up to staff to decide the formatting of this. But it's clearly going to show that it was updated or passed on, uh, May 26, 2020. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
All right, do I have a second?
A second.
All right, Lori's second. So I have a motion and a second to approve the investment policy of 2014 with adding appendix A and updating the authorized financial institution. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same, opposed, opposed, the same? All right. So that one, did I vote? We did vote, right?
Yes.
Okay, we're all good on that one. All right, what's the next one?
The next one is the fund balance policy that was originally approved in 2015. Um, that just gives the definitions on the front page there, the different types. And then it has, that it's the goal to build up and maintain the general fund, unreserved fund balance at no less than 20% of the current operating budget.
Okay, so my question is, how come we're not mentioning the other fund balances, sewer, water, parks and recreation, TID? I, I guess why is this? This one, it says fund balance policy. I would think we would want it to cover all fund balances, not just one. That would be my, my first, uh, question to you.
Yeah, I mean, we can add those. Do we want them all to be 20% or should it be a different policy for all eight funds or?
Well, that, that, that's a very good question. I guess, uh, I, I, I would have liked, uh, or I'd like staff, you know, to probably sit down and come up with some numbers for us. So we know, um, you know, I don't want to put anybody on the spot. Hang on, Michael. Um, but again, this is something we need to really probably have a little bit more information on, uh, before we do it. But I clearly believe, and I'm all for a fund balance policy, but I think it needs to include all of them. Michael?
I, I understand what you're saying, but I think that this fund balance policy specifically, talking about the operating revenue of the general fund or with the 20% of the balance is referring to the contingency balance that the fund wants to maintain.
Oh, I clearly understand that, but then we should name this as the general fund, fund balance policy. When I see fund balance, I'm thinking all funds. And quite frankly, if that's the case, then we should have a policy for each one of them.
Okay.
Well, I mean, I, I don't think.
I don't know.
Well, I, I don't, Mike, you're here, so I'm not, I'm not talking behind someone's back. But I don't think Mike should be able to build up a fund balance as high as he wants. Gets it up to, you know, a million bucks and, I mean.
Right, although I understand, I didn't mean we were talking about limiting it. I was thinking that those other fund balances wouldn't ever accumulate more than 20% because that's their operating budget.
Well, I can tell you, I bet you we've got a couple of them that are already over that.
Okay, fair enough.
Which, well, for sure Parks and Rockets.
Yeah, ours is, ours has been designated the way it is now. This last two years is.
Because 20% for them would be a little over a hundred grand.
And you're just rolling that over for years?
Yeah, literally just started this last, I mean, I'd say the last two years, it's, yeah, it's all over. But the plan was to use it either for capital improvement costs moving forward or we run to 2019 or shit.
Right, I don't want to get into the use of it. I, I just want to point out that I do believe if we're going to have a policy on fund balances, it should cover all of them. So I, I guess I'm not looking to do that tonight, but I would send this one back to, if the group agrees, uh, do you, we either have to rename this or include all of them. Kevin?
I would prefer, I like the idea of renaming it as the general fund balance policy because the other fund balances may act and behave and have different uses that are totally different. And I think this is probably close enough that we can call this a general fund balance policy. Get it close enough tonight and approve it and then send, send the staff back to work on these proposals or for something new or send it to the committees, frankly, and let them go through the committees before they come back here.
I, I, okay, I have, Bill, did you want to say something, Mike?
Yeah, I just, uh, so as, as a part of us going through this fund balance policy, um, as we have various other departments and funds that are technically rolled into general fund. Um, will there be some direction or discussion on, um, keeping it within that department or, or a policy as to rolling it back into general fund and then balancing it from the general fund?
I, I do think that is something probably our group will really look into and bring it back to the board when we have something, Mike?
Yeah, I guess I was asking kind of that same, not necessarily that same question, but, um, I guess more direction to from the board, to the committees on what they'd like to see because to that fund balance and how it's spent or how it's used, what that percentage should be. I think, I didn't look at that policy, but if I remember right, it had restricted and unrestricted. Look at mine.
Mm-hmm.
So maybe even, even within that, that policy itself, you just list what those funds would be. Just wondering.
Well, yes, I, there's, there's two avenues. We could do separate ones for each one, but you're right. Majority of this policy would just, you cut paste onto the next one.
Yeah.
Or what you do is you break it out within there, the different, the different ones. I am comfortable, it sounds like there's some interest in moving this forward. So then it would be renaming this one. And it, I guess if that's the case, and I will just focus in on the general fund. People feel 20% uh, is a reasonable amount to have. Now, again, I'm guessing the 20%, since we're doing to the gen, uh, uh, general fund, it would be 20% of the cost tied to the general fund.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Have you been any problems with it? As it is?
So, we, what did you say? You said 20% of the general fund in.
Well, it says here.
The general fund.
It says 20% of the current operating budget. So.
Is that village or is that?
Well, that's what I'm saying, no, right now, because we're making this the general fund. It would be the general fund, or one call count Parks and Rec and one count TID and one count sewer and water and one count, uh, whatever else.
Oh. Capital improvement.
Capital improvement, debt service.
TID.
If you had to put a dollar, just a guess, what kind of dollar money you're looking at? If you had a guess of what, what, what would that 20% equal?
I think Bobby's got that number. I think we're.
20% of 2.1 million. Where's my calculator?
2.5.
Whoa, 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 whoa.
20% of 2.1 million?
We, we don't, we don't need a, a fund balance of 2.1 million.
Oh, 20%.
Oh, 20.
2.1 is our operating.
That's what you say. Okay, so that'd be $420,000, so 20%.
We're currently above that now.
For the first time.
Yeah. Go ahead.
No.
I, 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 Mike?
I will say, if I remember right, the reason that this fund balance came into place is due to the fact that pre-2015, the village didn't have a very fund balance.
You are correct.
And our rating was very low and we had a violation, so.
This year is going to be a perfectly example why you want a fund balance.
Yeah.
Exactly.
So what is the pleasure of the group? We want to make a, a motion that this gets relabeled as a general fund balance and people comfortable with 20%.
I'm comfortable with 20%.
Would you want a good year? Would you want more?
Well, this, well, this is a minimum. You want a minimum of 20%. That's what, that's what we're looking at. Uh, again, everybody's got to remember, we have these other ones out there that we definitely have to do something similar to cover their costs if things go.
So I'll make a motion that we relabel the fund balance policy, uh, place it, you know, to, to general fund, general fund balance policy. And we maintain the 20% of current operating budget.
So I second that motion.
Okay, discussion?
Um, so then, which I like all these ideas, but is it kind of like, we're kind of throwing up the idea that we're going to have a 20% fund balance in every single.
No, I think we're going to have, I, what I would say is, I think we give direction. We don't need to do a motion. Direction to staff.
Right.
To evaluate the other funds and come up with recommendations on what they feel their fund balances are. What Mike says, areas where they may be able to spend that. You know, the whole thing, and then we will, looks like we will do a policy for each one of them.
Kind of get a whole entire big picture kind of things. We can just have more information. That's what's kind of curious with our general.
Well, that's, that's what I, my, I think we should do.
Sure.
So I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed saying? All right. Aye. All opposed, same. All right.
Okay, the next one is the budgeting policy twenty twenty dash oh one. Let's just put some more formal policy together about our process. Um, you know, starting with, we get feedback from the board on what they want as far as increases or goals for the year. Um, and then department heads each prepare their budgets. We put it together, present it to you. Uh, then the board reviews it, makes changes. Um, I did do a timeline in there. About what months we want to be doing which parts of the process.
Okay, uh, okay, Judy.
Bobby, on number two D, where it says the budget for the next fiscal year shall be approved by the village board. Adapted budget by the second Monday of December of each year. I thought we wanted to up that. I thought, I thought our goal was to try to have it done before that.
Well, that's, and that's going to be my, I, I have, since we're on timeline.
Yeah.
I would like to modify the timeline because, one, because you're, you're right, we're right up against when we have to have it. But because our meetings are in the fourth Monday of each month, we're really at the end of the month. So I would recommend May, June is fine, but then the next box stays July, get rid of August. The next box is August, the next box is September, October. So our heart of our discussion, if we need to, goes into November and we have much more time.
Cause then actually, and our November, we would be the one we'd prove it pretty well.
Yep.
Right, that's what I think, okay.
Right, I just had the second Monday in there because that's kind of like a, this is the last day we can.
Yeah, that's the.
The, the goal would be, yes, the November, Monday of November.
Right, but I guess my thing is just push everything up. Because when you say, uh, August, you're really talking the last week of August. So you're really, you're right into September. So I think we need to go July, August, September, October. That would be.
You wouldn't want us to present the draft budget at the August meeting?
Well, we, I, uh, yes, we would be doing, um, well, we would be doing.
There's so many numbers that we don't get before then from the state and that's, I think the August would be way too early.
No, I, I, I think what we would do is hit capital then, if you remember, we split it out and.
Yeah, so capital is separate. In the capital policy, it is August.
Right. I, I, I guess my, my point is if we don't have the numbers, that's fine, but. Um, I can tell you a lot of places are doing all budgeting, uh. In, uh, late August, early September. So when we say August. There's really not a much difference between our meeting in August and September first. I think if we presented at the end of September, we're, we're really up against the wall. Bill?
I think, I think late August is, is fine. Um, just understand that, that we won't have all the numbers and that there's going to be adjustments in the month of September. Possibly even October. Um, so just so that we all know that.
Right, and I, I would prefer dealing with the few changes than trying to get the whole budget done.
Okay.
Are there any other items on here that people would like to talk about? Okay, so if I can get a motion to accept, uh, the budgeting policy with the changes in the timeline.
Someone.
Do I have a second?
Okay.
All right, so I have a motion and second to accept the budgeting policy with the changes of the timeline. Uh, July for the department heads submit budget worksheets. August for the financial director submits preliminary budget. And then September, October for the board to deliberate on the budget and budget approval. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same? So move.
The next one is debt management policy twenty twenty dash oh two. Um, this just outlines what types of things we can borrow for, what types of debt we can issue. And then our limits, you know, the five percent equalized value. And how much of that limit do we want to stay under?
Right. Michael?
Do you need a motion?
No, we're going to discuss. This one has a lot of discussion.
All right, so we're basically setting our general obligation debt at sixty five percent. Of, of prescribed by law into policy.
That was just a number I was throwing out there for discussion, yeah.
Okay. Um, also, I noticed that you do for the general, we, general obligation bonds at below twenty years. Do you think we would ever jump up to twenty years when we currently do ten years all the time?
No, we don't. We do twenty. Sewer plant was twenty.
Well, yeah, but that is a general obligation. Those are in water, uh, grants and loans, aren't they? That's different than general obligation.
We've done twenty though before, even when Schutz was on the board.
Recently it's been ten, but.
Right.
Well, that, that's what I'm referring to. So do you foresee a change to twenties at all, or is that just put in there just in case we wanted to?
Do you think it depends on where rates go? Cause all of a sudden rates take off, we might, to be able to afford it, we might have to do that longer amortization too.
Well, I, well, I.
Well, what are you looking, just to make it so we're tied to just ten years?
Oh, no, I was just curious, like if there was just, I mean, I think it's fine. With interest rates being so low, you can secure a twenty year bond and paying nothing for interest. Or capital goes to nothing. I mean. You're going to have inflation that'll be in your interest rate. So you can go further out in your bond structure. I think it's a good idea.
Oh, okay. Anybody else? Well, I'm going to hit number three and four pretty hard. So, um. We brought up A, equalized value. Equalized value for cross planes is four hundred and twenty-three million dollars. You take five percent of that, we can borrow twenty-one million, one hundred and sixty, sixty-five. Um. Right now, we are at fifth, well, no, sixty-five, the five percent is twenty-one million dollars. Sixty-five percent of that is thirteen million, seven hundred and fifty-five. We are currently borrowed at eleven million, seven hundred and thirty-eight. For government business type, we're at seven million, seven hundred and ninety-six. Um, this doesn't take into consideration the new development. If we have three hundred units at four hundred thousand, that's another a hundred and twenty million dollars that would be in there. This, this number, I think too many people get hooked onto it. I see this number as your credit card limit. If your credit card limit is ten thousand, that you can only afford to pay it off at fifteen hundred. Does it matter if you can go up to fifty percent or ten thousand? No, you're going to be able to do what you can afford to do. Um, I think we're a asset-rich community. So I think this encourages, uh, spending because you say, oh, we're so far below it. When to me, it really doesn't matter. What matters is exactly how much we're paying a year for debt service. That to me is the key one. And because we also have C in there, I'm just making an assumption. Um, do you need to meet both requirements or can the board meet one requirement? Uh, to do the borrowing? Um, I think right now, uh, again, I've heard a lot of people and I'm certainly one of them, that debt service is something we have to work on. So I think sixty-five percent is way, way too high. But if we tie that, as I mentioned, to what we can afford, so you go down, uh, to C. Do people really think that forty percent of our budget should be going to debt service? I, I, I mean, I, I find that incredibly high. I don't think many of us. Uh, work on that kind of for home, that you would be at that kind of level. If you look at last year, we were at, and again, this number is tricky. You have to understand how it works. Because if you look in twenty eighteen audit, it showed our debt service at thirty-six. You look at our twenty nineteen audit, we dropped down to twenty-six. Now, did we pay off any debt? Absolutely not. What we did is we raised the other side by spending more money. So debt service became a smaller percent of what we're spending. That's where you come in with the danger on that. I think we do need to set, uh, some guidelines and limits. But I think these numbers, um, I think we need to dig in, in my opinion, we really need. Uh, to know what we're talking about in dollars. Um, I think it's easy to say percentages, but everybody knows it's pretty easy to relate, uh, percentages. What you can't do is exactly how much we're paying into, into debt service. Um, so I, I, I would caution, and I can't support these numbers. Um, and I really did not have the time. Uh, besides the, the sixty-five percent, because I'm totally opposed to equalized value using that at all. I would eliminate that, lemon, eliminate that totally if we were Marquette county. That is something we would need to really keep an eye on. That's a poor county. If you're a poor county, then you need to, to look at that because you don't want to tap out. I do think we really need to have some discussion on C, on what we can actually afford. Um, I would like to probably kick that to the subgroup for some recommendations. Before we come back, so we can really look at, at numbers, um, on that, but. I, I can't support forty percent and I think it would be unfair, unfair for me to just pull another number. Out of the air without really analyzing what it means to us when it comes to, uh, a, a debt service. Um, that is my feeling on section three. I'm just not comfortable with it besides B.
So would you stand that? What are you suggesting that we don't do anything with this then, since these numbers seem arbitrary?
Well, I, what I would, I, I would ask that we probably, uh, refer this to a future meeting, table it. But I, I, I don't want to do it right now because there's other things I want to talk about. But I'm not, I'm personally not comfortable with the numbers that are here unless Bobby has. But I already heard her say she just picked a number, um, so, and I don't have a problem with that because that's a starting point, but. To do something.
Kind of just looked at where we were currently and then, you know, rounded up to the nearest five or, you know, percent or whatever. Just for a little cushion. So, yeah, they could likely come down.
So do you think we are at sixty percent right now?
No, we're, I gotta say it's fifty-six percent.
What do you think, Bobby?
Right, it's right around there. I just wanted to make sure there was enough cushion in case we needed to do a large borrowing for something. That we weren't.
And, and I guess, I think people have to understand, these are not ordinances, these are policies, so they're kind of guidelines. Clearly, if we were in some type of emergency and we had to borrow to keep the village afloat or something, we would. It's not like we couldn't violate this policy. It's not like there's a penalty to it. It's a policy guideline. But, uh, I think we, I think we need to dig a little deeper into, um, our debt service.
Yeah, we would. In, in that, in that situation, we would likely amend the policy before violating it.
Yeah, yeah, but what I'm saying is it's not like an ordinance.
Yep.
Um, so that's my comments on number three. Number four, who is this financial advisor that? We're, who is talking about?
Ellers is what I, I took it as Ellers. I took it as, isn't his name Kevin that usually comes from Ellers?
Yeah, but that's just for borrowing, isn't it?
Oh, well, it says, is debt in debt service?
Yeah, it says, but it says that they monitor it.
Oh.
I mean, hey Bobby, can you talk, talk about what Ellers does for the village?
Right, so they help us with our larger borrowings. They look, um, for refunding options. Yeah, they just work with us on, and we need to borrow money to help us.
Do they keep an entire history of all of our borrows so you know what our expenditures are going to be going forward? Like what our debt services out for the next seven, eight, nine years?
Yeah, they, yeah, we have information from them on that.
Right, so they, they're basically like the database of all our borrowing.
Yeah, they give us amortization tables and let us know how much, like the Tito's on this loan and how much the water. Portion of this loan is and that type of stuff.
Right.
Okay, but I, I guess what I'm saying is I understand the role they play when we're borrowing, but. Do they annually come and give us a briefing on our debt service and debt? I know they give us that information when we're talking about borrowing, but. If, if, I, I guess that, that's, I don't have necessarily a, a problem then. I just think we need to. Clear that up a little bit because I don't, I don't see that as a financial advisor.
Is that something that we would like for them to do?
Do they do things like that?
Yeah, they, they, they do. Um.
Oh, yeah. You know, I, I, I'm not sure, you know? I, I think we have an in-house financial manager that I would expect to do. That's why I was curious on this. I understand where, when we do the borrowing, that's a special skill set and you need someone. And then they come in and tell us the positives and negatives of doing the borrowing and blah, blah, blah. So I'm, I'm fine if that's what just captures. But again, I don't remember them being involved in the clean water fund. Were they? Wasn't that right through the state? And I remember once we borrowed from the retirement ETF and I don't.
Talk about borrowing, they just say, these are your options. Like you can use clean water fund. They don't administer it. I think they just help us decide what type of borrowing to do.
All right. All right, I guess.
Is Ellers the only company around, do you guys know that does that kind of stuff for municipalities?
There, well.
I'm only wondering if we need to shop them.
Well, I think that there might be others. Um, I don't know, is it bigger, totally close to mine?
I was just curious.
Well, I'll, I'll be honest with you. I honestly believe they do a good job in the times that we've used them for. Um, borrowing and stuff. I think they're right on the money. I think they're honest. I don't think they try to. Give us information to help us feel good about ourselves. I think they're pretty good and I think the last couple bond issues, they did a hell of a job on getting us priced. So I, I, I don't have anything, you know, if we're talking about any financial, it's the auditor that I have the base payment. I, I don't think we get our money's worth there, but that's a whole different story, but I, I just wanted to get clarification on who this was now.
That's when I heard it, I think with Ellers.
Yeah, that's good. Okay, so that's very good. Very, that's, that can be on me, so it can, I'm okay with that. Uh, I'm comfortable with that. So I, I would, uh, you know, I guess I'll make the motion to refer this to. Uh, future meeting, um, where, uh, section three can. More information can be provided before we decide in that section.
Do we even need a motion for that?
I'm not really sure. I guess because I don't have Robert's Rules of Orders, I guess I do whatever I want. So I, I guess I want, I don't want to be the dictator here. I want to see if other people feel that's inappropriate.
I second, I second that motion.
Okay, discussion. I'm not sure it's absolutely necessary, but, yeah. All right, any other discussion on that? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same? So move. Thank you. All right.
And then the final one is capital planning policy twenty twenty dash oh three. And that's just kind of identifying what capital improvements are. The process for updating the annual plan. Timeline.
So I had a question about this.
Go ahead, Sarah.
Um, I didn't notice anything in the policy that that addresses expenditures that are not, that arise and are not in the capital improvement plan. Things that might come up unplanned.
Well, let's say, let's say the police, one of the cars get totaled. And we need another police car. It's not in the budget, hasn't been in, you know, it's not in the sale. She's asking what, you're asking, it's not. She's asking what, you're asking, it's not.
Yeah, it's not.
I think it's a good, what's the process of capital projects not in the SIP? I think that's a. No, I think that it's good to let everybody know how it's going to work, so.
I would think if there was an emergency expenditure, we wouldn't need to modify the SIP. We would just have to do a budget amendment.
Oh, I agree with you there. I agree a hundred percent. But the question is, so what you're saying is, I guess what Sarah's asking, maybe we put that in this policy of something, an emergency needs to happen. It would be, there would be a resolution or amendment to the budget to cover which the board would be.
Just to sort of explain the trail of.
Right. Yeah, no, that's a good one. Bill?
So if we had to borrow money for land, for whatever reason, would that go on to this?
Oh, yeah, that's the actual.
And then would we, and then we would, it would get prioritized as far as where it. I mean, I like the project's prioritization. I thought that was really, really good.
That was from our CIP. I didn't come up with those.
Oh, okay. Do you have a chance to answer my question, Jay? So that's good.
I guess I have one question on the timeline. If you took the middle one that had August and put July, with how much of a hardship? Because again, remember it's the end of July, so you're almost into August.
Right, since we moved the budget one back, we would likely need to move this one back a month then too. Otherwise, you're doing it on the same meeting.
Right. That would be helpful. And I would think capital projects are a little bit easier to predict into the future that should be a little bit easier to do. And then one other one under your policy consideration. It says if bids come in higher, department heads must get village approval before purchasing is allowed. I would also put in there if they want to take a higher bid. So it's, to me, if Mike puts out a bid for, let's say, a tractor and it turns out that the lowest bid comes from a company that we have a very poor track record in, or we feel that we get better service from the second highest bid, we don't allow them to automatically take that because we require them to take a little bit. I would like the language in there that they can come to us for approval to not necessarily take a little bit.
I agree. That's a good thing to add.
Okay, Michael?
So concerning this though, this has been inserted because we don't want current policies that they have to come to us every time to buy a capital project, right? Or, you know, funded via capital.
They have to come back a second time.
Right, that's what I'm, that's what I'm saying.
Correct.
This is being put in to eliminate that.
Correct.
So do we want that? Because then coming back the second time, this last time you just were able to fund a playground by using the fund by all this from Parks and Rec, right?
Well.
Because if that wasn't the case, then you wouldn't have used that money is what I'm saying. I like the fact that they have to come back a second time. And I couldn't make a purchase of that amount without your.
Right, right, right. No, what the idea here was that they come and make their proposals and have a detail on a cap. Buy a tractor. We give them thirty thousand. They go out, get a tractor bid that they like for thirty thousand or under. They can go ahead and purchase it without coming back again. Right, we've already approved it. I am comfortable with that, okay? It's when things get modified from that that's different. The reason Michael's came back was because we originally were going to borrow. We chose not to borrow and use a different funding source, so it had to come back to the board.
Oh, you chose not to borrow at the CFP landing for it? Well, no, it was.
Twenty nineteen, twenty nineteen borrow.
It was already in the twenty nineteen borrow.
Okay, whatever. It came back because of the timing of it and the funds that were being used.
Right, it was the late in the year, right? And it was also more than what it was. Right. Right, I mean, I understand what you're doing, but I like the staff coming back. I'm not saying that.
No, it's nice, but here's what happens in my opinion. Why would staff put a whole lot of time into the original request when they got to come back a second time? And that's when they really get the money. So I'm trying to get people to really give us detailed proposals and everything on the front end. We give them the okay because now we have all the information and then they should go ahead. It's, I think it's more efficient, I think.
Right.
And then if we approve a bid for thirty thousand for that tractor and they find one for twenty, they don't get to keep that ten. And that's where it's in there.
Right.
I support what you said in this case. The other thing that happens, it's happened several times is they get, the staff will get it approved by one board. New board gets elected in April and we've changed our minds and we tell them to not do that. So that's also been frustrating for staff. We can't for the villages. So that, this would be avoided by having to come back a second time.
Well, right, I understand that. But having that catch in the system could actually be because the board has changed its mind because of a capital planning issue or something that was being done.
But Michael, my feeling is if the board does that, they bring it up, they cancel it and do it. We may next month, depending on how things, we may put a freeze on spending. We may do that. That's our right to do that and that's okay. So we always can do that. We're not taking that away. It's just that day-to-day business, they shouldn't have to come back. They should just go ahead. We've approved it once, let's go with it and get it. With, besides these other circumstances. That, I think that was why this was put in there. That was kind of the flavor of the board at the time.
Okay, so another reason why I'm for that is because you're saying that you're doing it upfront because you wanted to construct a complete plan. Come, this is what we're doing. This is the exact legal equipment that we're doing. I don't know how long this policy is going to exist. I don't know how long you're going to be village president and demanding these plans from them. But in four years, they might not be doing that. They might just say, we want to put up something here, but here's money. They go out and they just do it and it's a little bit and it can be done because then it's even being looked at.
Well, any new board.
I'm just saying, I'm just saying.
No, no, but that's the beautiful thing. If there's a new board and they want to change the policy, they can. So what we're looking at for at least this year until next election, if I get elected or not, it, this is how we're going to do it in future boards. We can't tell a future board how to do their business. That's the whole thing. So right now, the question is basically for this board, is this what we want, how we want to operate?
I'm comfortable with that.
Okay, so if what we need is a motion to accept the capital planning policy with the change in the timeline from August to July and the wording that if they want to take anything but the lower bid, they have to come back.
And emergency action.
Oh, and emergency action, yes. Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second? Laurie does a second. So I have a motion to accept the capital planning policy with the addition of the emergency spending, the change in timeline and the change, the addition in the policy consideration.
Emergency spending, could you?
So that was Sarah's point.
Okay.
So would we only do spending of not on the capital improvement plan in the event of emergencies?
No, no, people can always bring it to the board. It's okay.
Or like just for spending on something if it's not, and they have a whole plan. It doesn't have to be an emergency.
No, no, no. We, on any budget item, people can bring up for a budget amendment to do that.
Yeah, maybe the emergency isn't the right word, but.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, we'll think of something.
Yeah.
Something that explains that.
Because you're right. I mean, we're planning this in July, August. That's a long time for the following August or something could happen. Yes, you're right. We need to have that flexibility. All right, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, all polls save.
Aye.
All right, six to one. Okay, that I believe takes us through financial policies. Okay, number ten, discussion and possible action regarding the twenty twenty first quarter financial report. Bobby, you want to go on this?
Yes, so the majority of first quarter, oh, go ahead.
Oh, go ahead, Bobby.
Oh, I was just saying, the majority of first quarter was pre-COVID. So I would say you take that out of the equation. First quarter is exactly how it should have been. You know, expenses are on target. Revenues are where they should be. I didn't see any major red flags or anything that would need amendments at this point.
Okay, I just have one question and it's more on terms that we use. In your memo, you use cash balances. Is that the same as a fund balance when I'm reading this memo? Because to me, they're two different things. I'm just not sure which one we're talking. I just want to make sure I know what I'm reading.
Yep, so dirt, like throughout the year, other than year end, they would be the same. At year end, fund balance is your cash balance less any payables you have on the books. So during the, you know, throughout the year, we don't really have payables at the end of every month.
All right, then I'm just gonna follow up. We have a discussion about building the water account number. And I thought we would be able to stock away some money with the new rate increase for the well. And you said we were a hundred thousand dollars in the hole. And I'm reading your memo and it says the cash balance, March thirty-first, is four hundred and sixty-three thousand. So I'm just, I'm just trying to understand how we're a hundred thousand in the hole but yet have a unbalance of four hundred and sixty-three thousand.
There would still be debt payments that would have to be made out of that. I believe those are made second, or made in April.
Okay, so that's what I'm getting. So the cash balance is the money you have in the bank. But a fund balance should be the money you have accumulated outside the budget. So when I, that's why I asked that first question. Because again, I'm trying to understand our accounting. So to me, if this cash balance is sitting there because we have this payment, that's fine. It's different than a fund balance. That's money that we're not going to use unless we're in the red somewhere. So I guess I'm gonna, of that four hundred and sixty-three thousand, that is all going to be spent for expenses in the water utility.
By the end of the year, yeah. So, yeah, this is just, March thirty-first, this is what we have.
It's a snapshot?
Yeah, I understand it's a snapshot, but I guess where am I seeing the minus hundred thousand that we're in debt? That's where I'm trying to figure out. Where's that in here?
Are you like the down here at the bottom where this final expenditure is probably fourteen and those you're looking?
No, 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 this is totally different than that. But that'll be what I'll be bringing up next. No, what I was looking at is, as you know, we have raised water rates forty percent. Right? And that for anticipation. So my thought was we would be building, we would have some surplus. And what I was hoping to do is take that surplus, like we've done in sewer, put it in an account to offset the cost of the well. When I looked into that, I was told that the water utility is a hundred thousand dollars in the hole.
But so Bobby, can you remind us when the rates were in effect?
March eleventh. So, yeah, the twenty twenty budget, if we did not do a rate increase, we would be down a hundred thousand.
But we did do one. But we did do one, so are we still down then? You're saying if we didn't do one, we'd be in the hole. But that's why we did one.
That's why we did one, yeah. But it didn't take effect January one like we were hoping. So we're a few months lagged. And then we'll have to, like I mentioned in there, we want to let that, see where we are after a couple months to get a good gauge of what an average monthly would be then.
Would you think though, with everybody being home for like eight weeks, as far as all the, you know, people are home?
And that's it too, yeah. People are home, businesses might be shut down, so their revenue might be down. You know, the multifamily units are likely up.
I guess, you know, I'm not trying to dig into that right tonight. But what I'm trying to do again is this whole thing of understanding the finances of, of the village. I, like I say, I tried very, very hard to figure this out and I struggled. And it shouldn't, I mean, I have a lot of experience in budgeting, but I'm really struggling with clearly understanding things. And that's just an example. And I know Michael brought up the Highway fourteen expenditure. I was at that meeting when we had DOT and our expert on water and sewer and Highway fourteen. And it was pretty much decided at that 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 was going to fall under general obligation. So I'm wondering, because Brian went through every one of the invoices to see on that. I'm just wondering how it ended up getting into sewer and water.
I guess I don't recall from that meeting that it was general. I thought it was decided it was water sewer.
Okay, for that project, did the borrowing, the borrowing of that come from the water and sewer?
It was both. It came from, because we ended up having to pay some for the actual street and the amenities that are along there. But obviously, we put in new sewer and water. We actually moved all those houses from underneath to the middle of the, you know, to the street. So there was cost and I'm guessing most of that seven, almost eight million dollars in debt is probably, a lot of that is from, probably, at least probably half is from the Highway fourteen. The rest is probably from the sewer plant because that doesn't get paid off until twenty-five. I don't want to spend a lot of time on that, but it's just, to me, it illustrates that it's difficult to do financial planning when we don't have that, that understanding on that. And I'm not going to bore people with it, but I know you had it. And I'm not sure if it's on a future or this is the part where you had it talking about borrowing for that expenditure. But I clearly want to look at other options than borrowing for that.
We have a handout with Jerry Gray.
Oh, okay, I read it somewhere. I wasn't sure. That's where I came in.
It says over here, borrowing will likely be, need to be done to pay upstanding invoices.
Yeah, so we need to have, that's another discussion that needs to be brought up on that. So I'm glad that it was brought up that we have this debt from four years ago. But I think we need to have more discussion on how we're going to make good on it.
Okay, we, let me take comment from Jerry. Jerry, you're unmuted, go ahead.
Yeah, I guess they're at the tail end. I was going to comment about how Highway fourteen, Highway P, things like that were budgeted for and financed. But it sounds like at the tail end there, Jay wants to do that at a separate time. So we can just do that then.
Okay. All right, thanks, Jerry.
All right, does anybody else have any questions on the update? This was something I've asked Bobby to do every quarter, so we all stay on top of things as we move forward. I think it's important, especially this year.
I don't think there's any action needed to be taken, though.
No, 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 this is an information item that we will receive every quarter. Help us decide things. All right, any other questions or discussions on this topic? All right, let's move to number 11. Discussion and possible action related to COVID-19 response. Number one, aid impact on the 2020 budget.
Okay, Bobby, I'm gonna let you go on this one till I'll jump in.
Oh, I thought you were gonna do that. So, general fund. We took a look at if the state said you're not getting any more money, you know, what would happen? And basically, if we were, we still have $289,000 that we're expecting from state aid in 2020. So if we were to not get that and our expenses were to be normal, you know, if we didn't make any changes to expenses, then we would be short and need to use some of that 400 whatever thousand dollar fund balance. Or wait, yeah.
But we have no indication from the state that they're not going to be, make good on that payment.
Right, I did email the Department of
Administration.
Yeah, that's true. And they gave kind of a vague answer. So basically, I don't think they know and they're not telling us yes or no.
And when is that payment due?
So it's multiple payments, so it's, we're still expecting two payments from DOT that are 80,000 each roughly, I think. So I do believe we should get those or at least a portion of those.
Okay, when, when, help me, so I can, through a timeline here.
Yep, so those would be July and October. I do have a spreadsheet somewhere where I have all these. There I got it. So yeah, the transportation aid is July and October, those are two payments of 78,000. The shared revenue of 106,000. We get 15% of that in July and then the remainder in November. And then there's a couple smaller payments due in July, 16,000, and then a couple $5,000 ones.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Jerry, go ahead.
Bobby, maybe I'm jumping ahead, but under the general fund, where it says various revenues from other sources, is that what you, what parks or what do you, what's, what's making up that 115,000?
That is, let me, I got the budget open here.
The park is categorized as a different fund, I think it's on page two.
Yeah, so this is like the money that the water utility would pay the general fund for their tax equivalent payment. The liquor licenses, building permits, zoning fees, that kind, just the miscellaneous revenue.
And then where it's a school resource officer reimbursement, we haven't agreed to do that yet, have we?
We have a, we have a current SRO agreement for the school district to, to pay us for a portion of the cost. They have verbally asked for an amendment to that. I have not seen a draft to amend that yet.
Yeah, they end up paying us about 60 some thousand bucks for their share of having the office. If school doesn't open, they're saying that they shouldn't pay because the officer's not in the school, but yet we still have to pay the officer. So there could be a 60 some thousand dollar hole.
Go ahead, sorry.
I think it, they only, it's 40,000, not 60.
Go ahead, Bobby.
Oh, just to move on, are we done with general fund or any more general fund questions or?
I don't see any gleaming eyes here.
So, capital. Since the budget was passed, we have gotten some extra revenues. So our cash balance is higher than what we thought it would be. So theoretically, we could do our projects this year and not need to borrow. We would just deplete most of our cash. That's an option.
Bobby, quick question for you.
Yeah.
How much cash balance in the capital are truly capital, borrow for capital, restricted for capital versus reimbursement from somewhere where potentially we could in an emergency situation redirect to operational costs?
Good point. Yep, so the 220 FEMA reimbursements, we could, you know, certainly move that over to general fund if we needed to, to cover stuff or, you know, Jerry sent some equipment to auction and those proceeds were about 27,000. That could, you know, be moved to general fund if needed.
Thank you.
Okay, library fund?
Library fund is good. They actually did get their money from Dane County last week. So they have gotten basically 99% of their cash they have. They won't, their revenues for the rest of the year will just be minor things. They don't collect fine anymore. So, you know, people make a copy, so piddly little revenues they'll have trickling in. So they have enough money to cover all their budgeted expenses without having to cut anywhere. And then parks and recreation, or is there any library question?
Go ahead, Bobby.
We're done with library, okay, so then parks and, no?
No, we're done, we're done with library.
Okay. Parks and park, I didn't touch on too much. I know Mike has been working a lot, trying to figure out what happens if we do this, what happens if we do that. You know, will they have to use some of their fund balances from last year, likely? But I'll let him talk more on that. Debt service is fine. We have, you know, all the tax revenue, so all our principal and interest payments can get made yet this year. So no concerns there. Same with Ted. What do I have for water there? Yeah, just kind of, we're unsure what revenues will be. But they should have sufficient cash to pay all, you know, debt requirements and operating costs. Any questions on water?
No questions.
Okay, and then yeah, sewer, just again, with revenues of people being home, businesses closed, we're not sure. I'm sure one area will go up, one it'll go down. Hopefully, it evens out and it's not too much of a impact.
I wanted to just make a quick note on the sewer utility fund. We have the annual report for tax increment, number three, coming up. Tentatively scheduled right now for June 23rd at 5:15, but well, we have MSA working on that report. So we'll have better numbers as to where the cash flow is on that. If you remember, we have that slide to repay the connection fees borrowed from the sewer utility fund to help balance that, balance the rates in sewer funds. I'll keep that in the back of your minds right now as, as a potential revenue for sewer utility.
But they also owe general fund.
They also owe general fund, yeah.
That should hopefully, if it does well, we might eventually see that.
All right, Bobby, does that conclude your report?
It does, thank you.
Any other questions from the board on this topic?
You want to go to the next item?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm reading the material. All right. Next item is discussion and possible action regarding parks and recreation. The new numbers were handed out.
These numbers all make more sense, I hope. All right, as Bobby had stated, I've done a number. This is probably, I think, number six or so that I've done, trying to figure out what we can and can't do, or what we have the possibility of providing our residents for the upcoming months within our budget parameters. What I've done is put one together for parks, recreation. So if we currently didn't offer any more recreation programming and continued our services through parks, we would be needing roughly $37,304 from the fund balance or, or other financing opportunities. This budget and all these numbers were put together prior to the Forward Dane program coming out, which came out last Monday, providing us with more benchmarks, different parameters for us to be able to start offering different programming and possibly even open up the pool, which we'll hear about a little bit tonight. Since then, I have been able to update numbers for recreation. As you guys know, recreation has a lot of fees that are introduced with, within those programs. And it's usually very self-sustaining in regards to the programming that's being offered. What I am vowing to you is that any program and/or offering that we have moving forward from today's date will have a positive reflection on the budget, meaning that we wouldn't need any more taxing or different funding coming from our citizens or from the village, providing we're able to offer some more programming. So for instance, if we were to start summer camp, which we are hoping to do on June 8th, we would, we have 27 kids that are currently signed up for that program. Forward Dane is allowing 15 kids per program or per area within that program, which would allow us to start up summer camp on June 8th and run the entirety of the summer, providing we stay within those phases. So that in itself has roughly a $53,000 price tag to it, which would be 53,000 more going into the revenue. Obviously, also some more expenses within that, but it is going to be a positive within our budget parameters currently. So I didn't want to give you those numbers tonight because I don't want to run other parts of our department off of those revenues. I don't want it to be a false positive in regards to, yes, we're going to be able to run all of them all summer. However, I want you to have like just a look at what the pool would be. So what I, what we've put together here, the new chart here, has taxes. The tax levy per se, what the Parks Recreation Aquatics needed when we were approved, the budget was 303,550. The charges and services are what we're able to charge for people being members of the pool or being in those programs. And I've estimated that our public charges for services, providing we open this facility or open the pool, would be roughly $40,634, needing a other financing opportunity of $72,918. Kind of move back a little bit here. What, what I've projected in here is that if we opened on July 1st, there'd be roughly 54 days of operations. So July 1st through August 23rd. We currently have 25 support staff. We would need six of those members per shift for the different work that we need, that would be needed throughout this process. We had normally had four staff members on throughout. That was what the normal budget numbers were set at. But with the different crowd control and cleaning that would needed to be done throughout the facility, the two extra members for, for hours of service would be needed. And these are all just scenarios. So what I was trying to do is give you a scenario, since I didn't have one from you on kind of what you're okay with and what you're not. So I'm trying to just give you a scenario and we can move forward or move backwards throughout that scenario if you'd like. So what I have in here is the pool would open at 1:00 PM to 3:00 PM, so that would be a shift, a two-hour shift where people would be able to sign up to come to the facility. We would then end that time at 3:00 PM and do cleaning from 3:00 to 4:00, and then open up again from 4:00 to 6:00 for open swim. At this time, we have no swimming lessons in this budget and in our opening procedure. The amount of PPE needed and the amount of, well, one, just the staff not having that training with working with PPE, whether it be a face shield or other things, but also having enough staff to keep the distance for the kids who are there in the pool just didn't seem feasible and something that I'm not real keen on us offering. Let's see, max capacity for the facility, so phase one would allow us to have 57 people inside the pool area. That accounts for 25% of what our max capacity is. The maximum capacity for our pool is 302 people at one time. However, if we were to close down the diving well or close down the diving board and slide, which is recommended, we have roughly 3,444 square feet, which would actually knock us down a little bit in, in the number of people we could offer. So 57 people would be the maximum at phase one. Phase two and phase three would allow those to increase 50% all the way up, I believe, to 75% of capacity. However, during any type of emergency action or any type of fecal accident that we have in the pool where we'd have to get everybody out of the pool and out of the facility, we actually only have 444 linear feet. So if you do that by six people, the maximum capacity that our pool should have would be somewhere between 74 people. So that's kind of how I tried to work the budget numbers out. It was 74 maximum, obviously, but I believe if we were to open July 1st, with the way that the numbers had looked, we should be into phase two, I would, I would believe of the Forward Dane project. However, you have to realize that that could fluctuate. So it could be phase two for a week and then it could bounce back to phase one, take another 14 days to figure out that we get into phase two. So there's a lot of things that could change, that would change our budget.
I just have a question, since we're on the pool.
Yeah.
I know you're following Forward Dane on that. Let's, I'm more interested in your professional feeling because again, you know, lawyers are finding this as being challenging court. Let's say this goes away. All right, there are no restrictions anymore. What, what would you be recommending to us?
I'd recommend what I just told you in regards to if we did open, that would be the maximum move on and how it
To 25%?
Correct, 25% to start. I don't know, if we didn't have those numbers, it's hard to
Right, I, I, I'm thinking that is a potential that may happen up there.
Right.
So I'm just So I'm just curious because that, for me, I'm not sure how this is going to do. And like you say, they are saying two weeks, but quite frankly, we're already, if you read what the nurses or the health department, we're already in phase two, but they want to start us in phase one. But who knows what could happen? We could be all summer in phase one. So I'm trying to get a feel from you, from your experience and what you're thinking. Is this something seriously we should be thinking about or?
You know, it comes down to two things.
My receiver died, so I'm going to have to answer this.
I think it comes down to two things. Number one, are we willing to take that risk, that liability that the village would be taking on by knowing that we are opening a facility to the public at which we're asking people to gather at? I did talk with Paul, our village attorney, just asking him, Bill and I both, they're just kind of asking him what he feels about this. Obviously, this is, this is, this is something new. Obviously, we're charging for a service, recreational immunity goes out the window on that. So anybody can have the ability to sue saying they did get COVID at our facility. They could say that about anything really that they paid for in regards to a program within the village.
Paul, Paul did know that there's a difference between suing and actually proving it.
For sure. Still costs us to defend. And I guess, oh, go ahead, Judy. I guess the other thing that I'm, what I'm thinking is, you know, I I kind of agree with the editorial in Sunday's paper that this whole game forward is very confusing. So I'm looking at where in phase two, you can have nine hundred to a thousand students at the middle school, four hundred at our, three hundred at St. Francis, but we can only have some, you know, seventy some at the pool. I'm trying to get the logic in 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 some of this. So while this is a good guide and I'm not opposed to it, I really want to hear from you if you really think it's worth opening up the pool or not.
I want to give people an option. Like I really do want to give people and I want to give our community something to look forward to. I think, you know, obviously, the last month, couple of months have been really rough on people. I think our our pool is, you know, kind of one of our gems, even though it's at its age, it's a gem for a lot of our community and people to use. I just, I want, there's obviously a risk and I understand that risk. And we have, we have high school and college kids that would be overseeing and being in charge of that risk from time to time, more or less on their own, which threatens me a little bit. However, you know, I feel like we've done a good job at being slow in the process and not jumping ahead saying we're trying to do all of this. Obviously, I understand the risk in regards to finances and understanding that it's going to cost us more to open. But, you know, sometimes that's what you do to to bring a community together. So from my standpoint, I think Forward Dane does a good job or Christine Omen is the one that we dealt with. Every time Forward Dane comes out, she comes and has more or less a discussion point with all the park and recreators that what does this mean? There's a lot of questions in regards to that of what it means for different entities or different services that you're able to offer. Personally, for me, I feel like the swimming pool is is a lot safer than some of the other things that we do allow. Going to the grocery store or, you know, going to all these different places, I feel like we are able to keep that capacity and keep people safe within the facility. The C D C has come on a number of times stating that the virus will not live in your facility or in your pool. Obviously, it's arrestatory issue though, so anytime people breathe or competitively swimming and they breathe out of water, which I just found out that injury doesn't happen, so that I swam, I will let. But so I feel like there is the opportunity to be safe and to give people an alternative this summer. We did do a survey, I threw out a survey just to the members or people that we had in memberships last year. I didn't want to do it for some lessons because I didn't want them to think we're going to have lessons for sure. But we did do it for members and, you know, seventy percent were saying, yes, likely they would come if we opened, providing there were some safety records in place. So I think the capacity aspect, you know, twenty five percent started. And maybe we put up our own, right? We don't have to go into phase two if if you're comfortable with that or comfortable with that. We can stay at twenty five percent, just understanding.
Sarah?
Just about a waiver for the recreational immunity.
Yeah, no such thing. We can't use waiver, right, Bill?
You can't wait.
Yeah, we can, we can.
Can for the recreation stuff too, like the summer camp?
No, so anytime someone pays for a service recreational immunity. So we may still have to show, you know, negligence for the most part and our part of what we did. Negligence could be just offering a program, I guess. Essential services for the most part aren't being looked at with that. I think there are a lot of studies out there now. And with us starting a little later, we're getting kind of an understanding about what those needs are from staffing standpoints, you know, different contact points, how our parents come into a building. Obviously, the numbers is a pay thing, making sure they come over and keep people or kids in a small room. But it doesn't give you that size of room.
So my my question is, like, do you know what I average, like, when we say seventy four people? Like, in the normal summer, what would be an average?
It's a tough one. So I did go through our numbers. Obviously, warmer days, you're going to get more people, right? Seventy people for us for an open swim time, just in a two hour session is quite a bit of people. I would say we hit that every once in a while, but I wouldn't say we go way over that.
So most likely, we wouldn't really get to seventy four, a lot of times.
Yeah, I mean, it, like I said, it's, I think this year would be a little different. So we normally have, you know, one hundred and seventy five kids in swim team. They're swimming six in the morning, you know, some of them six in the morning, some seven, some eight, all the way up till ten in the morning, Monday to Friday, and then swimming on Saturday. So those kids aren't going to have that opportunity this summer. So I could see them coming to the facility and using it more often, maybe even with the parents or with their other kids. But, you know, when it, it's just hard to say. Even with, even with the COVID, you know, is that the thirty percent, you know, they know I'm coming because of that?
The other, I, another question, Mike, I know you're trying to shut down the diving board in the slide, but is there any reason why you can't let people swim in the deep end?
No, and that's, that's another thing too. So if we went to that, we could go to the sun. And that's it, yeah.
Okay.
Kevin?
Could you just explain these budget numbers, Mike?
Sure, please. Yeah, so taxes is the tax levy, right? So the amount of money given.
Can you tell us what page you're on? I'm not sure which one you're asking.
Public charges for services or fees for programs and or memberships at the pool. And then other financing is just, I was looking at where that would come from. So the money that we're going to need.
Because what is the funding?
So what it states is if we open the pool on July one, our Parks Recreation and Aquatics Department would need four hundred and seventeen thousand ninety one dollars to operate. If we didn't open the pool, we would need three hundred and seventy thousand five hundred and two dollars. And our budget amount for two twenty twenty is five hundred and seventy thousand two fifty. And where the savings is coming from on all of those is pretty much part time staff and program supplies. So, you know, obviously, if we can't run, I just got an email tonight at Kloski, we're not going to open up the Legion. So we had a hundred and fourteen kids sign up for dance, which would have worked because it was under our number of fifteen kids. So we don't have a space for it. So I think now we can jump around and see where we can offer that.
So the three hundred and three thousand is all, is not just a pool, obviously, that's all part of our.
Correct.
And then the twenty nine thousand is publicly charged, charges for services.
That's current?
Yeah, that's already been charged.
And for services, we've already done.
But not on the pool, this is just totally separate. I guess what I'm confused is that something, it's sort of with the pool, without the pool, yet you've got a whole budget in there, right?
Well, so the pool is twenty twenty?
So I, hold on, just all I really want to cut down to chase. The pool closed versus the pool opens here, it looks like a difference of about thirty five thousand dollars. Is that right?
Forty seven thousand.
Forty seven.
Forty six thousand four hundred.
This is the difference between three seventy and four seventy two.
I'm sorry, the other financing fund balance difference right there would be the.
Oh, thirty.
Thirty seven.
Yes.
Or thirty five thousand, I guess that's right. Because the other, the other part is just offset by the payers.
Correct.
So an additional need of thirty five thousand from the fund balance. Okay.
Judy?
What would be your recommendation to, like, if you had your waiver? Not really, I'm just asking.
You know, like I said, I really want, I I'd like to see an opportunity, but I understand the list and I also understand money coming into it. So, you know, I, and I didn't give a recommendation, I don't know if I saw that memo, it's kind of on purpose, really, because either way, I'm going to make it open. So we'll find other ways to offer other things that we can do by not opening the facility. But if we open the facility, I'm going to be, you know, full bore at how do we do it the safest we can do it and try and make sure that the community feels comfortable to be in the facility. I was saying this before, I think Jerry asked me, he said, you know, what are you going to do if you don't open or don't offer programs this year? How are you going to get those people back? And I said, that doesn't bother me like that, I don't worry about that at all. What I worry about is opening the programs and having people get sick or have them even feel like they're not comfortable. Then I feel like it's harder to get those people back. That makes me more nervous than than not giving it. I just don't want to, and that's what I mean, that's why the other sheet that I put together is more or less, what were we doing as staff? And trying to make sure that we keep the facility safe.
Bill?
So you have inherent risk running the pool regardless, right? There's always risk and you have insurance for that.
Absolutely.
Right?
Yep.
So and to me, the pool is a kind of shining star for our village. If we did not open that, I think we'd have some very disappointed, a lot of disappointed residents, even if it wasn't open for the month and a half from July to Labor Day for two months. I do have a fear, it's not a fear. I I do have a concern that if other areas are not opening pools, are we going to get those people coming in here as as well? And how do you limit the number of people that can come into the pool at any one particular time? And you have a monitor at the front that says you can and cannot come in.
Well, yes, yeah. So I've talked about, you've actually even, if we were open, looked at how we could have people come in and not go through the facility. So we would actually take tickets or allow people to come in underneath the pavilion and they would actually enter through this gate and then they'd exit to the other gate. So we wouldn't even have them going into the facility as it currently is set up. The doors to the bathrooms would actually be locked and intended, we'd have signs of, they'd have to find the manager to actually go in to use the facility. Once they go into use the facility, they'll then go in.
I I guess my feeling is, I, you know, I, I think we have to seriously look at opening the pool. I mean, we've really eliminated a lot of opportunities for kids. I would clearly make it residence only. I would not open this pool for non residents. That that would be my feeling and I would have a little difference if I read your, I won't correct it, or somewhere in there. You wanted it just open for people who do membership, no daily?
Yes, so.
I I guess I would, I need to know a little bit. I'm more inclined that I'd rather have it open to residents if someone wants to come in for a swim.
Yeah, so what I was thinking is that way we didn't have money changing hands.
Yeah.
And so, and that's one thing that they do request. It's not obviously mandated, but they request they don't have to change hands. Being ours, being younger staff too, I thought this would be a good way to eliminate that. What I thought was, and I don't know how we do this just resident only, I mean, we just tell everybody it's only for residents. A lot of times across planes, though, you get people that live in the town across planes that feel like they're residents and that feel that could be an issue for us. However, I do have membership only stating that if you want to come in for a day or you come in for the thirty, I'm sorry, fifty four days, that he is the same. I do obviously have issues somewhat with that if we were to have, you know, a number of rain days and different things. But people always took that risk before. The way I set the budget up for you is at the current rate that we offer for the year. So I think we're going to twenty five for the family, a resident family. And you could make changes to that. I mean, we like make it less appropriated any way you want. But I just think it's the easiest way for us to understand what type of revenue we are going to bring in and we should be able to know that by the pay. Where we could, you know, bring in a lot more, maybe we're able to change up our hours even to allow more open swim.
And I guess if we're going to go with membership only, then to me, it's really easy to keep it to residents only. And only sell a membership card to residents. And I hate to be selective, but in all fairness, I, depending what the summer is, but if we have days like we had these last couple of days, I think you're going to peak the seventy four because kids that used to be playing baseball, soccer and all that, I mean, there's bent up. I mean, you see this, they're just out there, they want something to do. So I, like I say, I'm willing to spend more money to get the pool open. I like the idea of being safe. I think at some point, parents have to take the responsibility on safety of their home kid. They have that fear and I'm not saying we shouldn't do things, but I do believe at some point, we got to leave it up to parents and 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 manage that. But I, I, and that's why I think Judy asked I, as we really wanted your opinion because I don't want to throw something down and you're uncomfortable. But I would really like us to seriously look at trying to get the pool open because I'm thinking that might be one of the only things we might be able to do. And even if it's at twenty five percent, I think you'll have lines where people will call and ask, can we come down? And we'll say, no, we're full. Michael?
Do you have staff that are going to be comfortable working with the possibility of being exposed to COVID and all that? You do have people that are going to know that do everything and like, all right, we're going to give it a shot. Not like quit after one day and then you have nobody working.
I haven't received any, and I've sent out, let's see, three different emails to staff. We obviously had a hiring back in December. I haven't received one stating that I'm nervous or not, don't want to take the job anymore. However, we did it, we did there twenty five staff numbers. And, you know, if we're only open to open swim for those four hours, there may be ones that are looking for it. Just for the next three months, we did many hours of the working.
So that might be a follow up on staff that might influence.
It could, and obviously, I'd be coming back to all of you to let you know about that. At that time, maybe the other people that came forward that were in the past.
Okay, I'm sorry, I got Kevin and Bill.
So the revenues you're talking about still, maybe you'll bring it up for nights?
Okay, so the other revenue would go against the non licensed aspect. I have been contacted by a couple of swim team coaches that are still doing swim team for the season. Mac is the one that really contacted me. Shane Ryan used to be the coach here for the stingrays and he's now the coach for Mac, which is Madison Area Aquatics.
Madison Aquatics.
There you go. They are a private group. However, they do have a number of cross planes residents on their team. And what he had asked me was, well, what I asked him was, how much are you willing to pay? And he said, well, how much time are you willing to give up? And I said, well, honestly, from what I'm putting forward right now, if we were to be open from one to the six, there's a lot of different times to there that the swim team used to take up and or we used to take up within that. And he was willing, I mean, they didn't put anything on paper and I told them that these are things that we'll have to do as the pool accrues it. I kind of had a problem, obviously, opening our facility and then giving majority of the time of time to the swim team. But we're worried about budget numbers. What I kind of worked out in there is it'd be roughly sixteen thousand two hundred dollars in revenue. If they were to do the fifty four days for six hours in water at fifty dollars per hour, which came out to a budget positive at about ten thousand. So we'd have one pool manager that was always staff there. And then they'd have two full time staff that they would have for their coaches. They would allow six kids in the water at one time and they would do thirty-minute intervals. Get kids in the water and then do dry-aim activities with the ones that were out and provide six feet distance, obviously, of them. So.
And six hours a day?
That.
I think fifty dollars an hour is cheap.
Fifty?
Yeah, I think that's just cheap.
Yeah, I don't know. I don't, I don't know. So I like, I actually called Middleton to ask if, you know, that, what they were doing, their indoor pool they've done in the past. And for profit or for profit groups, nonprofit groups are all different, but it was anywhere from ten dollars to fifty dollars per hour. So. For, actually theirs is per name though.
Bill?
Oh, just a word of caution. I always kinda look at things as a what-if type thing. And I think you have membership and you, you have to make it super clear when you sell these memberships that it's a first come, first served. Because what's gonna happen, you're gonna get someone coming in at one o'clock, you're gonna get over your seventy-four and then they're gonna say, I've got a membership. You know, and you're gonna really piss off a lot of people, I think, potentially.
Yeah.
So just a word of caution.
So I think, and that's obviously getting the word out early, which I kinda put in here to people that do get memberships, people that wanna be at the pool. Understand that. And then the other thing within that is if we do have rain days or we have fecal incidents, we'll close for twenty-four hours and, you know, that. Cause those are usually the times we get calls, we get emails stating, you know, we paid for membership, I can't, I can't go in. So it's kind of in line with that. But the other thing would be if, you know, they close everything down. We have an outbreak in our community or even in anger really, and they decide that we're now closing things down. At that point, you know, do we give refunds or can't like, there's a lot of, a lot of reasons to.
And those are the things we have to work out. I agree. When, when someone purchased a membership, that has to be all laid out on how it's gonna work. And what happens if this happens or this? Because I agree that people have to know if in two weeks, all of a sudden declare emergency again or something and they close all pools. You know, what, what, what is our response? We have to work that out. And the same thing, it's gotta be straight up there. Look, uh, capacity's seventy-four, it's the first seventy-four. We, when people leave, we'll let people in. You know, other places do that. I think more and more people are getting used to that because everybody's counting now. Everybody is.
But going to Pasco, you're in a, I mean, someone's leaving and you're waiting outside for five minutes.
Sometimes it's five minutes if you're at the back of the line and busy, you'll be waiting a half hour.
The most I waited was ten minutes.
Okay.
That was wrapped around quite a bit. So, but.
Yeah, I think the, the one big thing is gonna be educating the community, but also like getting staff and helping make sure that even when they're not in the facility, they're waiting, they're keeping a distance. You know, management's definitely gonna have to be on the deck at all times and more or less discussing what those systems requirements are. The way that I laid it out with the four hundred deployed four-year fee, six feet of distance within that for the seventy-four people didn't account for families. So families are able to be in the same.
Isn't water and chlorine supposed to like?
Kill it?
Kill it?
Anyone?
It will. It's, it's the breathing. When you're on top of the water and you're close together, breathing and talking to each other, it's no different than us. If you're right next to each other in a pool, it kinda puts you.
Overstore?
Oh, there you go.
The other thing, just to kinda get you out of it, it sounds like, I don't know. There are a number of communities that have closed for the season. There are a number of them that are still pending. Some, just Dane County in general, some period decided last Monday they were closing for the season. They were opening, uh, but then on Tuesday, I think it was, Middleton Outdoors said they were opening. So that, I mean, I basically didn't have.
Oh.
Thing that they're right here.
Oh, that's good. Are they looking to open at the same time, July first or?
Maybe early, green light, whenever she wants to go.
Oh?
I don't know. She was talking at first like June eight.
Alright, any other questions from Sarah?
So are you saying you'd open it only for four hours? To, can you expand that back to the issue of the people with memberships and, you know, could we offer, since there's certainly no swim lessons and no swim team taking up the pool? Can we offer more two-hour slots so that people can come back later and say?
Right, so, yeah, and we could. Like I said, I just gave you parameters of what we, what I was trying to set. We can go more hours, we can go less. Just understand that budget question. So for roughly, uh, for every hour open is fifty-three dollars just for staffing. So roughly fifty-three dollars an hour. So you just add that.
Cause we're really only giving people these two chances in a day. And you have to, the pool has to stay full. You have to coordinate it, you have to do all that anyway. So could we offer more times?
Or time limitations? Hour max. All for people.
How do you keep track of that?
That's right.
It's just two hours. Oh, clear the pool?
Well, that's what I was doing for the two hours. That's kinda why.
You can do that, you can split it up. Just therefore people get the cycle around. If they have to go out one and come back the other at the end of the line, they just get it back in and.
That's a good idea.
At least it gets, these people are waiting out there for two hours in the sun, trying to keep track of their kids. Well, I think those are the, I guess, uh, what I'm hearing, there's a lot of support. So I guess what I would suggest, that you start coming up with an operational plan. I think you've heard from here how it would actually work, you know, more details and.
Could we open it even earlier than July first if the operational plan?
Well, we have roughly forty tile that have to replace, um, all the caulk. Um, I mean, the joint needs to replace. Uh, the concrete still is out. So we have, uh, five, five on the deck that need to be replaced with concrete. Let alone all the other art, sand and recreation stuff that we're trying to go. I, I'm comfortable with July first still.
I think there's a lot too, especially the safety part that you gotta work on.
I think you could open the pool in four hours.
So is there, so understanding that, uh, there's, what is that? There'd be six thousand dollars more that could be potentially needed to open the pool. Is there a number that you're willing to, to go with? That will, that will allow me to understand the hours that we could be open, I guess.
Well, I, I, I guess my suggestion is just do, you know, you got, oh, the numbers are ready for four. Look at for six, maybe look at for eight. Cause I'll be honest with you, I don't think we're in a position to say one way or another, cause it's all gonna depend on a lot of things that we've gotta look into. I think we're kinda in the same boat as you. We're trying to figure this all out. So, um, I think it would be helpful if you did that. So then we would know. And I think you, like, if you've already got it calculated out, like, you know, two more hours at fifty-four days is a hundred and four times the fifty-three dollars, whatever. I mean, uh, I, you know, I'm speaking just for myself, you know, I, I kinda see this as a priority. I think we gotta offer village residents something. It is summer. But then again, I'm more concerned about going through all this and then getting, like you say, slammed and being told to shut it down right when we open it.
Yeah.
You know, I, but we should have a better flavor as we get closer because things have reopened and we potentially could be getting into phase three, which means things are going very well for the county. So then everybody should feel more comfortable, blah, blah, blah. But it's, it could go the opposite. Kevin and then Bill?
I just wanna, it's, it's May twenty-sixth, our next meeting is June twenty-second. So I, I think maybe we have to give him some guidance on what to do before, like now, and give him a number, give him some latitude. Say, hey, you know, you're willing, go ahead, open it up, provided you keep it under X amount and let him go with it. Cause we can't meet in June twenty-second and say, go for it. A week later.
You're fully.
June fifteen, yeah.
Yeah, it's true to have it like.
But ideally, honestly, um, next week, I'd like to get out as much information as we can.
Yeah, I say go for it.
Is there a way we can cap it or at least give him some, or say, go for it at this rate if it's any like, you know, plus ten percent or twenty percent or something like that? That amount? I, I feel like we gotta give you some guidance.
I mean, if you're gonna go for it, you almost have to go for it. We.
I, 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 I think we have to make the decision. I guess I, I'm willing to go with what is proposed here.
Yeah.
And then I guess as we get closer, we can always decide to expand hours. You know, I don't think that needs to be decided tonight. Because the last thing I want to do is say, we're gonna open up eight hours and come June twenty-second, we find we're really in a financial hole and now we're trying to cut back. I, I, because to me, you can open July first and if it turns out seventy-four just isn't cutting it and we need to expand hours. But it may turn out that the four hours, we're not even hitting seventy-four, there's no lines, everybody's comfortable. I, I, you know, I'm not saying we're in the worst case scenario. Let's, we can build on that. But I do agree with you that we gotta give them a green light and I think the green light is, at least what I'm feeling is people want it open. To the extent of it, I, I'd rather expand hours and people feel good.
Yeah.
You know, versus reducing hours.
But then what does that do for your man? Right?
So I, I would like to get some answers, at least a few answers. Membership fees? Why do you wanna do that? I'd wanna know that kind of, you know.
Well, are we gonna pro-rate it? I mean, I don't feel good about charging the full price when they've lost a month already.
That's nice. We have received eleven thousand.
Well, we're gonna talk, I, I, I don't, you think it should stay? I think there's a rebate or a credit that should come in. That's just my feeling. I.
Well, okay, but.
I know it, especially cause it's more than eleven dollars.
Right, now, in addition to that, is it going to be a, I think what we decide is the rate, is there gonna be any refund to that money? Whether it's over two weeks and I'm gonna have to shut down because.
Yeah, we will.
Are we refunding or is it just like, this is your hundred twenty-five bucks, it's a danger if this is gonna?
Well, my, my, because we're gonna talk about it later on other ones. I think we'd be, I think we give a credit or something to do it. I don't feel good of us making money on something when we shut it down.
You do have a policy in place though. So once a program starts, so once that would start July first, once it starts, you will no longer receive a refund.
I think you have to. I mean, it's a different circumstance and to me, I'd be like, oh my God, it's giving our kids something to do. I wouldn't mind paying it.
I, I would agree with that, that it's not their option, but if we decide to shut it down, then I think we're obligated. That, that's where I'm coming from, that I, I mean.
I'm fine with it. I guess if you guys decide I'm good with that, it's gonna make sure that the budget.
Maybe we should take a vote?
Well, yeah. We gotta, I just wanna say we gotta hand out, uh, the chance. So just wanna let you know that.
To Jerry?
Uh, it's a dead color.
Um, well, were we, I didn't think we were opening it up once comments were made. I, um, I guess I, I'd rather keep this as in-house.
I just wanna make that comment.
No, no, I, I appreciate that, but I think we are keeping this as, uh, board members. So.
I just wanna make one more, like, I think that you might get some angry residents if the non-resident swim team gets more hours than the residents. And I was too, I don't think that would go over well.
I care that that would also be the case.
So.
I, I would agree to the, only to the point where I don't think if we did hours that are undesirable, that people, I don't think there's a lot of people that would want to bring their family at six, seven, eight o'clock in the morning, you know, for less, you know, cause we had swim team before. So I agree with you on that, but I think there's some probably undesirable hours that we could, yeah.
Are they, would they do morning versus evening in the evening?
I think they're open to that. They want pool. They, they're literally in a struggle.
But kids are gonna be, families will be upset if it's like six P M. And they can't go to the.
No, I agree with you there.
The one thing they did say is obviously it's open to any, you feel the residents and they, they can leave it open to allow for, for the residents to be, uh, that, to be part of that team if they want to be.
Really expensive.
It's, yeah, I don't.
It's like eighteen hundred dollars.
Yeah, but that, that doesn't really address what we're.
Mike, tell us what you absolutely want from us tonight.
I would love to see, uh, a cost. So we're going pool membership only. One, just one thing I did think about was doing a punch pass. We do have the punch pass system that we do for fitness programs. So if people wanted to do a punch pass rather than membership, that may allow us to.
So just.
I did have it in here.
Keep it simple.
Okay, so memberships and how much the cost would be, uh, for that membership? Hours, which I think we kinda have, do you read to that? So hours that were not open, whether or not you're open to renting the pool and if so, at what rate? Everything else, I think I can.
Alright, let's, let's take it. Everybody comfortable?
On that, that's presenting, right? This is gonna be our starting line. Alright. Currently, we're charging.
I'm just gonna hit a pause. My mic went out again. Now what's going on?
Like, can we put the rest of this on to another?
Okay, we're getting what we can. In some ways we gotta go. Cause it's, I, I can explain why, but, okay, so right now we're paying memberships a hundred and twenty-five. They've lost basically a month. Everybody comfortable with a hundred, just keep it straight. People who've already paid to get their twenty-five bucks back, a credit, a credit of twenty-five bucks.
And do non-refundable? And do you think it's fifty-four dollars or it's fifty-four days? I think non-refundable.
Okay, alright, I, I'm going.
We're taking a big risk as a village.
And there, there can have a lot more cleaning.
Hundred dollars.
Yeah.
Okay.
A hundred dollars, non-refundable. Are you not good? I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, that's, no, I, I'm good. What was the other thing you wanted? Oh, renting. I think if we can rent some hours, I, I'm gonna leave that. You've heard the concerns. You can give, you know, whatever, you know, fifty bucks, I, I'm, I'm good with that.
Plus, yeah, or maybe do a research.
It's more than fifty, would be good with that too, you know.
My, like, yeah, I, the, um, the hours of open swim versus the private swims that happens, I just think those need to be at least equal. So if it's five and five or six and six, you know, to have it six private and four public, I think could be really bad. So my recommendation would be those hours would be pretty close to equal.
Alright. Martin, where did you?
Um, and you'll have like the COVID.
Oh, yeah, signage and.
Yeah.
Everything up around the building, you're saying?
Well, and just when you put it in the paper or whatever, that, you know, we have to follow these guidelines and that they would be refunded, would not be refunded.
That part for sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Did we hit everything? Or was there something else you wanted?
Is, is there a way to clean the pool that you clean that at all?
So we will. So we have a wizy wash that just puts chlorine in it and then we're able to spray that pool back. Uh, oh, and then one other thing I don't.
Should you know how to, you know, do that like after?
So I'll be done every hour or every, every, so we're open for two hours, you have an hour to clean the deck.
So after the team comes from Madison, we do the whole shebang again. Just making sure, just, cause we're bringing people in from outside the community and that's kind of a concern, just a little bit. You, you lose the insulation of keeping it to residents only.
What was your last item?
Oh, no pool, no pool chairs. I saw that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can people bring it off?
People bring them home. Yeah, so I'll put that in part of the thing. It was like, when you get your membership.
Okay. Who wants, uh, get a crack at this, uh, motion?
Do we need a motion?
I, as long as he's got guidance.
Yeah.
That's what we did. We just gave him guidance.
Yeah. I, I'm fine.
Maybe just a motion, uh. Maybe just a motion, uh.
For the pool to open?
Yeah, I think we need a motion.
But didn't we already do that?
Yeah, well, you had to push the start date to July 1st.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion on the open the pool July 1st, when guidance given to my. I'll suck it.
And no matter what, when he keeps his job.
Yeah.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all full say.
So moved.
Yeah, thank you.
Do we need to talk about the other rec stuff, or are you gonna?
Unless it's absolutely necessary, we still have quite a few items on here.
I'm agreeing on that, so if you need that now, Dan, come back later.
I mean, I guess for program wise, we are going with forward dane as our, as our good executor, anything that can make money, uh, or not, I shouldn't say anybody, but this budget even, uh, or, or good, we're gonna try and do, obviously, all the same steps of PPE and making sure people are safe are in place, um, staff training will be done as well, so.
I think that should be left to the department. Yeah. All right, discussion and possible action regarding resolution number 07-2020 to waive interest and penalties on property tax payments, installments due on or after April 1st.
Well, in your packet, you have a sample, a draft resolution, um, it's a, a mirror draft of what the county has passed and reaction to 2019 Act 85, which, um, waives the penalty and interest for the penalty, um, for late payments. Yeah, in body, we still have Bobby with us, so if there's any questions, we can refer to her. But it's my understanding that we don't charge late fees for that anyway. And so we become compliant with Dane County and with Wisconsin Legislature, which reduces any kind of future in regards to, uh, late tax payments and mental impact to the village.
So are you in motion?
Yes, we do.
I motion to pass resolution number 07-2020. Second.
All right, any discussion?
Do they have to prove that they've had hardship, or we just, we just forgive it?
No, it's basically what's happening is they still have to pay us. The only difference is we're not charging an interest on it being late or out.
Up till October 1st.
Yeah. All right, I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same? So moved. Okay, discussion and possible action regarding alcohol licensing fees. This is because we shut down businesses that had licenses, this basically gives them a credit for this coming, uh, year on their license for that time period that they were not allowed to sell. It's a fairness thing.
Mm-hmm.
I make a motion that we, um, waive the alcohol licensing fees.
Well, a recommendation.
Prorated reason.
Yeah, try a prorated rebate for the days that they're closed, and we can do that by, be by my number of days.
From March 17th to June 30th.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
My second.
All right, I have a motion and a second to prorate a rebate for the licenses from May, uh, March 17th to June 30th. Any other discussion, any discussion, I should say. Bill?
Uh, so why June 30th? Because.
Aren't it due?
What's that?
That's when they're due. That's the end of their license.
Oh, okay.
All licenses expire on June 30th.
So if they're open now.
If they're open now, they would not receive that rebate.
So, I, I, I think we should give it all away, I mean, they're open at 25%.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't wanna do 25%.
So you wanna do the, 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 the date, everybody, days.
As long, but it's with the renewal of the new license, it's a rebate on the new license. And one's 100 bucks, the other one's 500.
But this is only for class B.
Right.
So, the 450.
I thought class B beer was 100 and class B alcohol was 500, but I can't.
Yeah.
That's what I thought.
But is this one really for beer?
It's, it's for only class B, because class A were open. Liquor store could still sell.
So these were.
1999 still in there, okay.
Yeah, these would be the, yeah, these would be the, uh.
It's a good incentive.
Yes, yeah, let's do it.
But they sell individual, they have, they need a class B. All right, I have a motion and a second, any other discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, same? So moved. All right, discussion and possible action regarding ordinance 03-2020 regarding overt 19 prevention and control. Chief, you wanna?
So, um, obviously with COVID-19, um, they criminalized it here in the county, it's been, it's made it very difficult for us to enforce, because our partners down in Iowa County, it, you know, it's just different rules, different kind of, it's just been a nightmare, so. The other part of it is that they have decriminalized, so the only real teeth that we used to have was that it was a crime, so if you violated, uh, the law, you go to jail, well, that doesn't seem quite fair when you're 10 miles out of line, you know. So this would give us some teeth, so if somebody chose to violate the orders, um, then we would have ordinance that we could issue a citation. So it kinda gives us just an opportunity to get people to comply. Now, obviously, we're using a very soft approach with everything with this, because people are confused, even with forward dane and those kind of things, but they're still confused. And so we're doing a lot of education, a lot of personal contacts, a lot of those things. Uh, we're guiding ourselves based on complaints, so if somebody complains about social gathering, or if we see it, we, you know, we're kind of joking about it, days spread out, but we're taking a very soft approach, because uh, like, for instance, myself, I, I work here, but in Lafayette County, it's wide open. Come and go, go to any bar, and so that's happening all over the state, so. You just, I, I just think that this ordinance would be, give us a little bit of, you know, teeth that if we needed to apply it to someone who this is not gonna comply, and, and is creating a safety issue for, you know, which we will have a stubborn person from time to time.
Okay, I, I just, I wanna make sure, right now, if someone violates, you can still have county do enforcement, because it's under county jurisdiction, so they can do it. What we'd be doing is doing a corresponding ordinance, so the village could do it. And I, I guess, I'm gonna be honest with you, I really have mixed feelings with this one. I think this is extremely confusing, it doesn't necessarily make sense, and once you do an ordinance, it falls on us or the enforcement part of it. It could, I, I guess the question is, depending, I guess, I, I can't remember, if the safeguard is there, if they say this goes away, let's say the courts rule it that it's not constitutional, or it goes away, what are we gonna do with our ordinance? Do we gotta then come up with this, all these different rules for for all these different businesses and stuff? I, I really got mixed feelings on this, because I, I have a problem with doing things by county, I think when it was statewide, it made sense. When you do it by county, we're gonna be restricting people who could go to arena or just outside of Mezzo and changing and people coming in here, so I, I, I'm a little indifferent on this, it's not like I'm strongly against it, but I just think we have to really think about all these rules that we are now willing to enforce with potentially an ordinance. So I have Bill, Judy, Bill.
I just wanna note that the, the ordinance does coincide with emergency order number two, and that there is language in here that it shall remain in effect until one year from the effective date of this ordinance, or until PHMDC cancels its emergency order relating to COVID-19. So whichever refers last. Whichever refers last is what it says.
Well, Judy?
I have a hard time with it, just a little bit, only for the fact I think people are confused, like the Badger Bones back, like, what is and what isn't sometimes, is it, I don't know, I even like, do they have to wear masks or not, like, people like, I don't want people coming in, in the bank with a mask on, or, I mean, I just, I feel like everybody's confused already, and I'm afraid, I love the warning, and I love to say to people, hey, you're not six feet apart, but I don't know if I really want it as a citation yet. Like, I just think people are even confused what is really what they are gonna get.
And that's. Having teeth, who that is, then all we, all we can do is shake our finger out, and, yeah, you can bring in the county to maybe enforce something, but why would they come into our jurisdiction to enforce? I mean.
Because they passed it.
Yeah, but then they'd have to go to court on their own to, to say that that's happened. So now we're referring our cases out, doesn't make sense. I mean, it's, it's the, it's the buck that they passed to us, so, I mean, if you're okay with the fact that we're just gonna wiggle our fingers, so let's say, let's say, just for sake of argument, that one of our bars decides they're gonna fill up. Okay, and so we're just gonna show up there and say, please comply, and they're gonna basically tell us to go away, and we're just gonna go away. I mean, what we're gonna do is we're gonna call the county and step aside and let them come into our jurisdiction and take over. And then, and, and they are issuing citations. So I know Madison is, and I know the county probably is, I don't know if they are or not, but we're basically asking them to rescue us when we could have our own ordinance to say, hey, either abide by it, or you're gonna get a citation.
I'm just thinking that.
I have Bill, Michael, myself.
So personally, I have a very difficult time, we've criminalized an order. We've had, we have one person who wrote an order for the, for Dane County, and, and that's one person's opinion, and, and a person can be criminalized for.
No, it's not criminalized. When it was state, no, no, you missed my shit, when it was a state one, it was criminalized, when it went to county, it went to civil. That's how you can do a citation.
That's still citation.
It's a citation, but it's not criminal.
Right, but you still.
No, no, I just wanna.
That's funny, but you still have, you, and I know, and I, I know your department's all about this, I know it is, because I've talked to your people about it, and it's a big, but, we, we have the Constitution, we have the Bill of Rights, and that takes precedence, in my opinion, over an order from, from, from the Dane County exec. I, I understand what you're saying, but I also think that we have to respect the republic. I respect the Constitution and respect the Bill, Bill of Rights, that's my bit of Bill speaking, right? So, uh, you, this is what Dane County did, right? My opinion, no, but that's my opinion. So I have, would have a really hard time supporting this, this resolution, just in that respect, if that makes sense.
Michael?
I was just gonna point out that this thing comes about emergency order number two, that one expired this morning, emergency order number three was put in place. It says it's good for all future ones, which it relaxes back to so many people. Still can maintain six feet, but it opens things up, and it's just.
Yeah, myself and then.
People that can gather at one place.
Myself and then Kevin. I, I guess I kinda look at this from my experience with immigration laws. It's the law there, federal government's responsible, I don't think local police should be involved in it. I have kind of the same feeling with this. This is a county decision. It's a county order, I think they need to take responsibility for it. That's kind of where, where I'm coming, we didn't really have input on it, I don't know how, I mean, I think the executive just took what the state was looking to do. And I'm not gonna make judgment if it's right or wrong, because I think time will tell on that. But I guess my feeling is, this is, comes down to me as a health issue, and I know the health department is the big backer of it, because that's where it's coming from. Again, I'm not real strong on it, but I'm not sure we should be enforcing the health rules, not that I'm gonna disagree with them, um, but they, they have a whole arm of county government that can do the, the enforcement part of it. That's just kind of where I'm coming from on it. Kevin?
Yeah, I guess while I read this, um, I was surprised to see that we actually needed this. I thought that this was something that we could, we, our police department could already do and take care of. Um, and I would hope that you were or would be, so I'm, uh, fully supportive of this, at the county, at the local, and at the state level, and I, um, I hope that we can pass this and make some people, make it known to people or groups of people or businesses that we're taking it serious. We fall within a county, uh, that has this rule, before that, we fell within a state that had this rule. I don't see how when it goes from the state to the county, it becomes any less important. So, uh, I'm fully supportive of this and encourage you all to uh, put some teeth, or, I'm sorry, the last point I was gonna have is that our chief came here asking us for this, too. And so I'm looking to him and saying, all right, you're asking for this, this is the tool you need to do your job, let's give it to you.
This, I, I, I'm just fearful, I mean, I, I, I'm reading a lot of things, obviously, if you guys are, too. I'm fearful that we're going to have a spike. So people are gonna lax, then we're gonna have a spike, we're gonna be back here, at least if you get people comfortable, understanding the law. We're not, we don't have a department by any means that runs out and writes tickets, by any means, that's not, this is one of the great things about taking over this department, is that they fall into line the way I believe law enforcement should work. So I don't, I see this as a last resort tool. This is that last resort, the person we've talked to a couple times, the absolute stubborn person. So I think that we need to have at least in the books to say that we're taking this seriously, because we need to take it seriously if it becomes an issue again, because I don't think our state, everything I'm hearing, and in all meetings I'm going to, that our state is gonna take this up again at all. So unless there's some massive line, so I think that we, we have some teeth and our, and we're prepared to have to write it to ear tag and a hundred dollar ticket, I mean, it's, it's not something that's gonna kill anybody, but it'll at least show that we're taking this health scare seriously, and that if you choose to violate the law, there are penalties for that in this.
But here's my question, I'm, I'm gonna, I, I'm gonna throw it out, we're gonna have a youth football camp on June 18th with 20 kids. Can, is that legal or not? Looking at this here, this matrix, because you're gonna enforce this, right? This is what we're asking you to do, is tell me if that's legal or not.
Depends on what phase we're in.
Yeah, right, well, let's say we're in phase one.
If you're in phase one, well, it would be illegal. But I would think that those entities would follow that phase, you're in Dane County.
Well, that's right, well, yeah, it's the whole thing, but I'm, I'm on that, and I can't figure out exactly what category we would be in, I don't, I'm not sure if we're in the dangerous one or non-dangerous one. Because it would all depend on what we do with the kids when we get them, if we have them run the 40-yard dash, and they're six feet apart and they run, and then we have them do the jump, and then we have them do a few other things where they're not, you know, no contact, no, I mean, I'm trying to figure out, because we're saying football, and that's classified as a context, but, but we're not doing any.
I honestly don't see that that would be an issue, because I think people know, they'll educate, they'll say, okay, we can keep. Part, kinda like the pool has a whole bunch of rules, are we gonna drive by the pool every day and make sure that people.
Oh, no.
No, I don't think that, I think it's to give teeth for a major situation. I'm thinking more like what happened in Platteville. Bar opened up, there was nothing that they could do about it, it was a mess. And the bar closed down and out, I mean, that's what I'm thinking of, is a mass gathering of sorts, an event that we have no control over, that we can at least have some teeth to, to do something with. I mean, usually, there's only one of us on, so, I mean, the only option we normally have is either to enforce the law or to drive away from it. And so, and I don't know if I wanna give control of the sheriff's department, if we say, okay, we're not gonna do anything about it, and we call the sheriff's department to handle it. I mean, will they handle it the way they're used to cross funds, police department handling things? I'm not sure.
But, but it's not a law, is it? It's a order.
Yeah, they can write their ordinance. So, okay, so you don't approve us to handle it, but we could pass the buck on to Dane County, they could come in and enforce.
Those emergencies, they're considered temporary laws.
Yeah, they, they can enforce it, so I guess if we're okay. Yeah, they they can enforce it, so I guess if we're okay with Dane County handling a major incident or something where it's a repeat offender, then fine. But I think you would want more control, so it would be us handling that, having a little more, I mean, I I think you're used to a certain police department. So that was really the key behind me and pushing for this, I'm not above laws, I would prefer people to comply. But if our only option is to say, okay, we got a seventy five person gathering, they're not following any rules, we, I have to call in Dane County to handle it. That kind of takes away Crossbones Police Department control, they're going to do what they're going to do, they could issue everybody at the party, you know, they could do all kinds of things. So.
Sarah and then Bill.
I think, well, I'm in support of the ordinance and I think it not only affects the control of perceived. Um, protection, safety provided by the police department. It's a, it's a enforced by the county and to allow you to do what you need to do and I don't feel like. Chief told me he's going to go write tickets, like you're the kind of, you're, the department is the kind where you. You know, you give a warning, you know, you know, this is just in the worst case scenario, allow us to do.
It just gives us local control of what poss, what the outcomes are if this happens, if if you, if you don't choose to voluntarily comply. I honestly don't think we'll ever have the issue ticket, I mean, in my conversations with the bars and I just. I just think that people are really uneasy now, if we have a spike and we have something come up in September, let's say. It's going to be way worse because people are really going to be anxious about.
I just, I just want to say that, uh, you know, I think trustee, this is mentioned it earlier, but we did all sit down, chief and I and. Our attorney go through all our ordinances to see if there was an ordinance that we could potentially enforce. To be able to enforce the Dane County order and given the current situation that the village doesn't. Uh, we didn't see a strong case with any of our ordinances currently, and that's why it's before you now uh for consideration, and I just want also. Make note that I believe uh the violation for. Uh, about for, for the violation of the emergency order under Dane County is a lot higher than what our penalty here is.
All right.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance zero three twenty twenty.
I'll second.
All right, any other discussion? All right, we better do a roll call vote.
Yeah. Uh, trustee Brocious?
So. I am. For the record, totally against this, but I respect our chief and our police department, so I'm going to say yes.
Trustee Campbell?
I did all that. Said.
Trustee Lucius?
Yes.
Trustee Pomakowski?
Yes.
Trustee Francois?
Yes.
Trustee Zander?
Yes.
President Landau?
Yes.
All right, is there any reason why we cannot move? Item twelve to the June meeting?
Uh, we can, um, just understand.
Because I, I think uh. Falls a lot on on my shoulder and I think because we're talking about some of the other things and we'll have a little bit more information. I think we'll have a better answer, I would hate to spend a whole lot of time talking about it tonight and then in a month, things change and we have to re-talk about it again.
Yeah. You mean this morning?
I kept looking at that and I was really nervous.
Okay, does, so we will refer item change twelve to uh the June meeting. So now I have four future agenda items. What, are there anything, Lauren?
Um. There are kids jumping off the bridge. Um. On Milk Creek.
I saw a bunch of kids.
Yeah, and I just uh. I'm not sure, do we need a sign there liability wise?
Well, we have limited liability, but we should make that, we should put a sign there that you're not allowed to jump off the bridge. Sadly.
They're diving, they.
They're diving.
Because it's a deep hole under there.
Six foot deep and.
It's crazy, we we shouldn't, so I I'm going to already refer that to the public safety committee.
In parks, is it park?
Oh, yeah, that's a good one too.
So, so I've copied kids and told them to stop. Well, it's all.
Well, I tried yesterday, they won't listen to me.
Yeah, if that's the case, it's fine.
But it would help us.
Yes.
Liability.
And 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 I guess to me, if there's signs there, I mean, I don't have a problem with someone to call their parents now, but. That would be my next step, if they've been warned, it's time to call the parents and get the parents involved in this.
It'd be different if they were just like waiting or, but they're diving, they're doing flips.
That's crazy.
And I don't have a problem giving it to the committee, but I'm I'm worried about a timeframe because we need to stop it before.
Well, we're, I I I'm hoping that, yeah, parks and even police are down there.
Yeah, because they looked at me like.
But we're not going to do anything till June twenty second either, we can't pass it today. Right, right, so, I mean, yeah, I I'm guessing these guys are not going to sit on it until it goes through committee, I'm just being respectful for both committees so they get. They understand what the issue is and talk about it.
We'll put it on the agenda, but we, we, I got them today, so.
Oh, my gosh.
That's why that point needs to be over.
I just, I don't know, I give one of them right away.
Okay, so both parties are aware of it in the short term, we can try to deal with it right away and then take it to committee on both of those. All right. Uh. We are going to drive a motion to go into closed session. I have a second. Good night now, thank you.
Good night.
I'm calling you that Christie Norman, what, what the forward dame for a team force.
Oh, thank you.
It lays it all out really well.
All right, very good. Uh, I think Bill did. And I don't even remember who seconded.
I can, I don't think anyone did, I can.
Okay, Judy seconds it, roll call vote.
Uh, trustee Zander?
Is it yes, is it yes or no? Yeah, I know you're here.
Not really.
Trustee Francois?
Yes.
Trustee Pomakowski?
Yes.
Trustee Lucius?
Yes.
Trustee Campbell?
Yes.
Trustee Brocious?
Yes.
President Landau?
Yes.
All right, we're in closed session. Oh, is your mic off?
Yeah.
Kevin, thank you for yelling that out.
I make a motion to adjourn at twelve thirty.
Second, second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, I know it was a long one, emotional, the time's boring, but I need to get through this, so.